Call the meeting to order. Hello, welcome. Is there anyone that would like to say something during the public input? Okay, seeing none, thank you. We'll go straight to Jensen Kathmetam with the student report.
For athletic matters, the winter sports teams continue to do well and some notable details include the boys indoor track team who became league champions after they finished their undefeated season against Masco, winning fifty-two to thirty-four, and against Linfield eighty-six to nothing, with a record of nine oh and one. And the girls' track team also finished with a double victory over Linfield and Masco, finishing their season at seven and three. The boys and girls team will be competing at the Cal Open Title tomorrow at five-thirty at the Reggie Lewis Track in Boston. And the boys basketball lost their first game to Masco this past weekend, but they look very strong going into playoffs. The swim team will also be competing in their Cape Ann League Open on Sunday. For academic matters, quarter three has begun and midterm grades have been sent out to each of the students. The chess club has qualified for the North Shore Interscholastic Playoffs. Course selection sheets have also been passed out to the juniors during their history classes, and they have begun deciding what the classes they'll be taking for their senior year. Guidance will be meeting with each of those students starting February eighth. This past Friday, a parent from North Reading High School, uh, North Reading School Systems, Mr. Von Zalida's came in to speak about his career as an attorney during a seminar hosted by Ms. Bollniers and the Guidance Department. Fine Arts Model U.N., Model United Nations Club headed by Mr. Pentopoulos took part in an international event hosted by Harvard University, and Mike Tyrell and Liz Carlson took home awards for exceptional performances in each of their speaking roles. It has been an outstanding performance and by far one of the best the club has ever had. For information, there was an informational meeting for the new SAT that was held on Tuesday, January twenty-sixth. It was a success as it hosted sixty, over sixty families, and a big thanks to Mr. Lepret and Mr. Rosa, who coordinated with Summit Educational Group. And lastly, the junior parent college night will be held on February fourth at six-thirty. For my student work sample, I have a lab report that I did in physics where we talked about how for, how force affects, or how mass affects force and acceleration. We learned that the more mass there is on an object, the less the, um, the fewer the acceleration it has. And there's just a rubric attached to the back of it, too.
What question?
Good job.
One thing I did want to mention that I know the high school, I think it's, is the last weekend in February, the last Saturday, is hosting the preliminary round for the annual high school theater competition that METG runs. And we're really happy that we can show off our, um, our new performing arts center. I think we're gonna have about twelve or thirteen high schools here that perform one-act plays beginning at like eight o'clock in the morning, and it goes all the way till six or seven o'clock at night. So we'll be putting our theater through a really big test on that day, and we're looking forward to that. Jensen also mentioned that the sports teams are doing well. I don't think, I live in this town, how long have I been, thirty-one years, thirty-two years? I don't think I've ever seen a season where the sports teams have, have done as well as they are doing at this time. It's incredible. Our worst, our worst record is a three and three record. A five-hundred record is the worst record of all of our teams. So it's been a great season, and we're gonna have a lot of state playoff games, and it should be really exciting.
And just as important as our winning record, which is very important, but just as important as that is the participation rate that we have. We have a number of sports that a lot of parents probably don't even know about, but we have a gymnastics team that is a co-op team with Danvis. We have a girls' ice hockey team that's a co-op team, our wrestling team's a co-op team with Linfield. But all of our sports teams, it's, it's not just the winning record, but the level of participation that we've had this year and last year and for the last several years, so.
Extremely high.
Very proud of them.
It's been continuing to increase.
Yes, it's been growing rapidly.
Well over three hundred students each season.
Yep.
I'll check this for mistakes, but we had a meeting, so I'm not gonna be too.
Can I publicly acknowledge the middle school performance this past weekend? They had three performances, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, of Bugsy Malone, and it was fantastic. Bugsy Malone Junior, yes, and it was great, and I wanted to announce that, very happy and proud of our kids.
Yeah, there was tons of scene changes, and they went through them without a hitch. It was incredible.
I don't know how they do it in the dark like that.
I know. Cat eyes. All right, Jensen, if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jensen.
Okay, we're going to skip around just a little bit, and we're gonna head straight into the middle school presentation. Mrs. Wall?
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I'd like to first echo what Ms. Hopkey said about Bugsy Malone Junior. It was fantastic. I know a few of you, I know, I saw you there, and how many of you were actually involved in the production? Couple of you. There were a lot of middle school students. It was wonderful. So that's great, and I also wanted to thank our students for coming tonight. I know my heart is racing just a tiny bit, so I know you're probably a little nervous, but I'm really glad that you're here, and I'm glad that your parents are here, and whatever you present tonight is gonna be wonderful, and I'm just excited to see it because you know that I come around to your classes. I've been to science, I've been to French, I've been to tech ed, but the school committee doesn't always get to come around and see that. So they just wanna see what you're doing, and they wanna see how excited you are about the self that you're making in science and the French that you're learning and the really cool animation projects that you're gonna show them. So that's all that tonight is about, is to show them how great it is to be in middle school. I also wanna thank our teachers because they were here two nights last week, and they're here tonight with me, and I asked them to come, and I really appreciate. Sue Musacchio is here as a tech ed teacher, and she brought some seventh grade students with her. Laura Wall is here as a co-curriculum leader for science, and she's here supporting one of our awesome sixth-grade science teachers, Ms. Novicki. And we also have Ms. LaHaye, our, our eighth grade French and Spanish teacher. So I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Thank you. I also wanted to thank Mr. Maloney because he helps me with everything that we do, our assistant principal, and he especially helped with the technology tonight. I was a little nervous. We have three different types of technology with the presentations, and I wanted to make sure everything was working. And he double-checked and triple-checked, and even just right before seven o'clock before we came in, he said, "Everything's working. We're all set," so that's good. So without further ado, I'm gonna, we're gonna start with the sixth graders. So I'm gonna let Mrs. Wall talk a little bit about grade six science and a little bit about some changes to the grade six, seven, eight science curriculum that will be coming in the years ahead. And then Ms. Novicki will introduce the sample lesson that they brought to show the school committee.
Okay, so we're very excited that the new Massachusetts science standards have officially been adopted this past week. Last summer, the North Reading Middle School Science Department worked to develop a new grade six curriculum based on these standards using the backward design model. Very fun work last summer. We really enjoyed it. We're very excited about trying it out this year. The changes in the standards are twofold. They focus on big understandings in science and on the science practices themselves. Students are asked to ask questions, define problems, develop and use models, analyze and interpret data, use mathematical and computational thinking, construct explanations and design solutions, plan and carry out investigations, engage in argument from evidence, obtain, evaluate, and communicate information. Our plan is, and we are looking forward to, developing a new curriculum for grade seven this summer and then the following summer for grade eight. So the students that are in grade six now will have been exposed to the entire new curriculum. And Ms. Novicki and her students will share some more about grade six for you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna actually introduce, while I get the PowerPoint up, because you got it. I'm gonna introduce the students that are here helping. So Connor's gonna come on up, Eddie's gonna come on up. You can bring your notebooks, come on up over here. Maria, and I have Annie, and I have Ryan, come on down. I'm gonna introduce a little bit about the science curriculum that we are working with first. And then we're gonna, we actually have an investigation that you're going to do. So they're gonna help me with that. So structure and function is the overall overarching idea here in sixth grade. Specifically, according to the NGSS, to inquire about the structure and function of the world around them, to engage with natural phenomena and design problems, that will be the foundation for seventh and eighth grade, and to relate structure and function of the macro and microscopic world, introduce scale and time, use models and simulations, and provide evidence and science knowledge to make claims and craft explanations. Now, one thing that I wanna mention as we introduce this investigation, this isn't a singular investigation. These practices, these ideas kind of go through the whole entire school year. So while this is just one modeling situation, this is like what we do. This is what we do from, from beginning of the year to the end of the year. So Maria's actually going to introduce to you what your task is going to be. And so she's gonna tell you a little bit about your task.
Okay, so your task is to create a model of cells by using only Legos. Your structure diagram on page one-hundred-twenty-eight in our, in our interactive notebooks that we're going to be passing out, and the functions on page one-hundred-thirty in the interactive.
So what we actually have done is we've actually tabbed them, so we will pass these out. We're gonna pass these out. We're also gonna tell you a little bit about the criteria, what the criteria are and the constraints. And before we pass everything out, Connor's gonna tell you a little bit about the criteria.
So the criteria basically means the goals of an investigation or inquiry. And the criteria for this was to create a cell model, a key to your cell, a list of organelles included, and all the parts must be represented on your model.
And so those were the goals, but with every investigation, we understand that there are certain limitations. So Eddie, you were last though, actually. Annie, you were gonna come up and write and tell us a little bit about the constraints. So Annie's gonna tell you a little bit about the constraints.
So the constraints are the limitations to achieving your challenge goals. You can only use the Legos that you have been provided with. There were different Legos at different tables, and you were not allowed to trade. One class, you only have one class to complete your model, and the organelles that are represented in some way must reflect on the function of the part.
So what we're gonna do is we're gonna pass out some notebooks. They've been tabbed with the little, with the little red tabs. If you don't mind passing, we'll pass some of these out. If I could get each one of you to grab some of these, we're gonna do two per table, so that you can take a look and you can hopefully not cringe at our investigation. So I know your kind of lit space is a little bit limited.
Yeah, you're gonna pick your own model.
So what the students did in this, in this investigation was they, we had some prior knowledge. We had knowledge about the structures of a cell, and we had knowledge about the function of a cell, and then they had to kind of put it together. So what students were, were, the task of what students were doing was is they had these Legos, and they had to build a cell model. Now, what kind of cell depended on what kind of base plate they had. So if you have a green base plate, you are building a plant cell. If you have a gray base plate, you are building an animal cell. If you have a blue plate, what do we say the blue was? Do you remember? Anybody remember what the blue was?
A wild card?
It was a wild card. You get to decide if you wanna do a plant or an animal cell. So you have a few minutes. Let's see your cell.
Let's see, wait. And the other thing is, how long is the class? We only have like five minutes, yeah?
See, that is, that is, well, that is one of your constraints. Yeah.
All right, help Mr. Conley.
Yeah.
All right, we have blue, so we have a wild card. All right, okay. So step one. Okay.
That's what I'm doing. What does this have to be?
So we're gonna do something, we're gonna do it like this, right? Am I doing this right? Come on, Maria, you, let me, let me check your work. I wanna see if you really know what you're doing here. So we're gonna do things like that, right? They don't have to be the same. Okay. Where's my work? Maria's mother works at the high school.
Oh, okay.
Nicole Peas.
Okay.
All right, so are we doing right? Actually, we probably at this point wanna go like this now, don't we? Doesn't let you go that way. Like at an angle. Can we go like that? That's okay? Yeah, you can't. You can't. They won't, they won't do it. All right, let's do the animal cell. So we're gonna do this, now we're gonna just do it square, right? Okay, so we're gonna do like that. Okay, but then we have to do an inner one, don't we?
It doesn't have to be the same like shape or anything?
No, not on the animal one. Not on the animal, like doesn't have an inner. Like this has a double wall?
That one has a cell wall.
This one does.
Yes.
This one does not. Okay. Come on, you have to help me.
So we build the wall, and then, and then we start, we choose, choose shapes to build like that.
So what, what does this call? Is that the nucleus? So can that just go like this?
Yeah, you can put it, um, anywhere, only in the bottom there. Yeah, yep.
That's the nucleus. Oh, we gotta get a little, the nucleolus, kinda like that. Doesn't have to be quite in the middle, right? Okay, the ribosome. So I'm gonna put a little ribosome. That's a little ribosome. That okay? Oh, a vacuole. I remember the vacuole. Yeah, that's not any of those.
Okay, one more minute.
One more minute.
Now we'll show you what the students did.
Did you hear Jerry? I think we did pretty well. Okay, didn't we? I'm a big Bigger Dines fan.
But you have a cell wall.
That's a ribosome. I think we did okay. Oh, the cytoplasm.
It just, it's probably best to do like.
So we probably, this should probably be made before we did that, right? I think we did okay. What do you think, Maria?
All right, I think we need to stop. The kids had one-fifty, fifty-five minute walk or so, did you guess?
And they also had, I think, part of the struggle is that they had four, five, or six other group members at their tables. So, you know, it's one thing if you're working with one other person, you're deciding if the nucleus is gonna be represented by a tire. It's another thing if you want the stormtrooper's head to be the nucleus. So it just, it's, they had to agree, they had to collaborate. We did a real big piece of, of science this year. So up on the, up on the screen, I just have some of the examples of the student work.
We got a few breaks on us.
Every group produced something, but they chose to do it in different ways. And so when you look at their, at the key, it explains kind of how they related the different parts. A lot of kids used the gates or ladders possibly for the cell membrane, allows things in and out. They were really, really creative. It was done pretty exceptionally. Oops, sorry. And all of the work that the students do is in the interactive notebook. And that's what you're looking at. This is the only thing the students carry around with them. They do not have binders. They only have this interactive notebook. And actually, Eddie's going to tell you some of the pages that you can find certain things on. At the front of your interactive notebook, there is a table of content for easy access. But what we have here are just some, some places where we can find certain important pieces of information. It is a little work in progress because the students haven't completed this totally, because we're currently working on it. So Eddie's gonna tell you where you can find certain things.
Do I go now? All right. So if you look on page one-twenty-eight, and it's out of order because this is the second book. We had to move on to a second book because our first one was pretty much chock full. And so page one-twenty-eight, you'll find the, the cell diagram, which was basically what you're just looking at. On page one-twenty-nine to one-thirty, there's the cells and the cell parts, just labeling all the cells pretty much. Well, it's just a list of the cells. And then there was the cells as a city, page one-thirty-two to one-thirty-five. And it basically just told like how the cells would act if they were in a city to get a better understanding of how cells work, like as a city, just to work off of. And then there's the storyboard where, was that the one with the comic? Yeah, so that, we were able to make a little comic book, and we just, so there were words and empty boxes, and we got to draw the pictures of what we would do, just drawing pictures pretty much of, based on what was being told by the narrator. It was really fun, and then there was the cell processes, cell respiration versus photosynthesis on page one-thirty-seven. And something we were working on currently is microscopes. We're looking at cells with microsc, yeah, microscopes. We're, today, we were looking, well, yeah, today, we were looking at onion cells and cheek cells.
Cheek cells?
Cheek cells.
And while I'm kind of showing you how this aligns to the new standards, I'm gonna ask Ryan to come up if you don't mind. And one last thing, if everyone, if everyone wouldn't mind looking at page one-thirty-six. The one-thirty-six was Cells Like a City, and I had, I had called it a comic strip, and I was so eloquently corrected by my good friend Ryan here, who told us that actually it is not, it was not a comic strip. Am I correct? It was a storyboard. So Ryan's gonna tell you what you're looking at on page one-thirty-six, so if you don't mind sharing that, please. Are the microphones on? I have no idea. I think so. I think you could talk nice and loud.
But they don't have the glowing red right there.
No, but the cable microphone.
You can use this one.
This one? But I don't hear anything.
That's where the cable TV is. You'll hear any TV.
Oh, yeah.
So which microphone is on?
That one's on right there.
This one? Yeah. I don't hear anything when I tap on it.
Because it's, it's high-tech.
There we go. Okay. So page one-hundred-and-thirty-six is the Cells Like a City storyboard. And well, it's labeled upfront, how can cells be like a city? When you open it up, there's a bunch of squares, and there's this text above that tells, basically tells you what to draw. Those of you who should be noticing. Okay, now we're on to it. We make an illustration for each one. All of them are colored because we had to do that for more. And it's really fun to make for most people. And that's the Cells Like a City storyboard.
Thank you very much, Ryan. Thank you, thank you. And these are the standards that it aligns with. So these are the standards, as you can see, it crosses through technology and nearing life science, just for this activity alone. So thank you. Thank you very much. Yes.
So in terms of the new standards, what's the adjustment that teachers have to go through to one learn and then embrace the new standards?
Um, other than a lot of time, a lot of collaboration, I will be honest, uh, over the summer, we worked with Laura, who really, she has an under, a real understanding, a real great understanding, and she was kind of, she kind of kept us, in a sense, in line because Kristin McDenton's the other sixth-grade science teacher, and she and I were kind of like the idea people. So we just, anything and everything, ooh, we got this, we got that, it kind of goes with this, it goes with that, and hey, how about this and that? And, you know, sometimes Laura had to rein us in and say, okay, well, you're going too far off, come back. And so we spent the summer kind of streamlining our, what we were going to do. But every day, I'll be honest, every day, we have to make something new up because there's not much there that we've actually, you know, we've done in the past, and it's all brand new. So it takes a lot of creative thinking on our part to make it meaningful and not rely on bookwork. I mean, you know, pairing important content with an understanding of the inquiry of science, and so.
I think, would you, that's the biggest shift is to inquiry more than, we're more used to lecture and, and then regurgitate what you learn. This is more, they just, they are discovering the knowledge through inquiry and hands-on learning, and I think that's an adjustment in the instruction part of it.
So we gave them, for instance, with the cells, we gave them the functions, what the jobs are, and we gave them the structures. And the kids then started to ask questions about, well, how do they fit together? What if this doesn't work? What if that doesn't work? And so the kids are asking questions, they're constantly talking and thinking to kind of create a different way of thinking about it, rather than just, all right, I've gotta memorize what the mitochondria does. Well, what does mitochondria do in the grand scheme of things? Why is it important? What does it have to do with plants? And they're getting how it all kind of fits in, which is, which is kind of cool.
Laura, did I hear you say that the sixth-grade curriculum is in place when the seventh and eighth is next year or over the next two years?
Correct, yeah. We'll do the seventh-grade curriculum next. And the way we start is we, we took all of the standards, so now we'll take all of the seventh-grade standards, and as a department, all six of us will sit down and go through each standard and really kind of brainstorm about what we think that standard really means. And then come up with essential questions and understandings, and through the backward design process, finally come down to, okay, now what can we do in the classroom to have students show us that they get these essential questions and understandings? So I think we feel super proud and confident that everything we're doing is one-hundred percent linked to those standards. And we just, I, I think you can say in teaching, and I, we were just really excited about coming into this year to try everything out, and for the next two years, too.
Just one question.
Yeah.
How are you finding that the standards are different from what you were doing previously? Are they rigorous? Are they kind of in line, maybe just a little different?
I think overall, they're, they're fairly similar in the, in the general content. Like the kids are still learning about, you know, the fossil record, and they're still learning about the cells and cell parts. But it's done in a very different way now, in that it's done kind of where everything kind of crosses over and back to. And so you can't study earth science without learning about life science. Whereas before, it was a very rigid distinction, like physical science, earth science, life science, and things were kind of done in like little pods, so to speak. Now, all of our units kind of just, they kind of blend into each other, and so, I mean, it, it all kind of cycles back. I mean, the kids were already introduced to photosynthesis at the beginning of the year when we were learning about the sun. You know, in terms of earth's place in the universe. So we kind of, so now, I think there's more of a design for a lot more doing, creating, thinking, but it all kind of, kind of blends together a lot more than it did before.
The standards themselves are much more focused on the big picture rather than some, I mean, kids these days, they find any detail they want like that, just it's, it's right in front of them. But can they, what can they do with that? Do they understand how it fits into the big picture in the world and how, what it affects? And that's what the big focus is for the standards, the big change.
Hey, hey, Tom. So next, we have grade seven tech ed, and we have three students who are gonna show the work that they're doing with Ms. Musacchio. She's new to us this year. She's teaching tech ed to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. And tonight, she's going to show some animation projects that the kids made that I got to come in and see that I thought were fantastic. So I'll let Ms. Musacchio take the wheel.
Well, I'm here with three, uh, three students from seventh grade, so we have Henry Palmas, Nisa Denahi, and Nasrin Ordeal. And we just wanna share this project with you. I, I can spin off the science curriculum area a little bit and say that technology is moving more into a collaborative environment as well as creative, adding creativity and problem-solving skills. So this project built had three steps to complete, and the students here are going to share the steps that they had to take in order to complete this project, which involved a lot. So I'll let them do the talking. So Henry's going to start with step one. What do we do first?
Um, so our step one was kind of to start to just learn about the digital literacy and the responsibility topics. So we started off with, every day, we would start off with about a ten-minute pre-survey that would see what information we already have about the topic and what we know about it from what we've learned in the past years. And then there's an intro video that will kind of help to introduce you to the topics and make sure that you're understanding what you're gonna be learning about in this topic. And then there's some other things, so we continue through on that. But there was four topics, and each student would get a different topic. So there was choosing a computer, which was basically about like what to focus on when choosing a computer and how to.
when choosing a computer and how to decide what's the right kind of computer for you. Uh, wireless communication, which was all about how cell phones work and how like data roaming works and everything like that. Uh, the viral world was social media and what is appropriate to do on social media and what isn't appropriate. And then digital rights and responsibility was about how to avoid doing inappropriate things online and it mainly focused on things like cyberbullying and some of those kind of more serious topics.
Nasrin's going to focus on step two, which was creating the storyboard.
Um, before you wanna start any project, you wanna have a main line or focus on your plot. So we started out with a storyboard where basically we were assigned a topic and we kind of just had the freedom to explore. And so for the shot description, we made, we wrote about what do we want the scene to look like and we drew a sketch of what we thought should, the general idea should be. And we, um, we used actors as the characters we were gonna use on our animation and location was used as setting. And, um, when, one of the cool things about the program was that we could affect like the location, the audio and music, so that was like an extra thing for us. Um, the, the main point of the storyboard was to kind of like focus in on what we wanna do so we can dig right into the animation. And here are a couple of examples for our storyboards. The first one is about viral world and the second one is about wireless communication. For our third step, um, it was to take our storyboard and bring it to life using the GoAnimate, um, software. And first we'd create a background for each, um, scene resembling what we did on the storyboard. And then, once we did that, we'd use the custom character feature to make our own characters, um, based on the description we wrote in the, um, the storyboard. And then our final part was to add in the speech of each of the characters, which for me was the hardest part because you really wanna get your point across of your subject. And once we did that, our whole story came together with all of the animation and the end result was like really interesting, really cool.
So, a couple of examples. Uh, probably won't show everything, but, um, let me try this one first. Do we have the sound on? I don't hear any sound. Probably just need to turn the volume up, right?
I just don't know which type of computer to get.
Yeah. If you really wanted, I would be grateful to use a formal computer. I work in a state, I do math, and I said, can you get one? We just have to look nightly.
Now, I was wondering if I could have a computer. There are some expensive ones, if I would like one for school. I understand if I do not have one.
Actually, you're dead, and I were talking about getting one for you anyways. It sounds like a great idea.
Well, thank you so much.
No problem. We can go to a computer store tomorrow. So what type of computer do you want?
How may I help you today?
I would need a computer that I could use for school use.
Okay, we have a lot of those. Let's take a look around the store together. These are some of the computers we have. We have a laptop, a tablet, a computer server and another laptop. Which one are you looking for?
What is the difference between a laptop and a tablet?
Well, a tablet is very portable, but some do not come with keyboards. This tablet is called an tablet, a very popular brand. A laptop is a good choice for students who would like a computer for school use. A laptop is usable because it is portable. You can use many softwares and there is more storage.
I think laptops sound better, but what if storage any software?
Here, follow me, I'll explain. Let me explain what storage is first. Storage is also called memory. It's a core function. Storage stores information in the central processing unit or CPUs where it is stored.
Okay.
Let's look at, let's look at another one.
Servers are computer programs or apps.
How do I get this off now? Escape? This show controls in the way, okay, good. All right, let's look at viral world.
Hey Bill, I want to buy this video game, we know invaders of the galaxy, and I found a website to buy it off of as an HTTP dot fi- dot a dot game, no dot com, should I?
No, Joe, that is dangerous. See websites that start with HTTP are not safe or secure. Your information might get stolen or hacked by hackers.
What? I did not know that. So does that mean we can't get the game?
Well, you can still get a game, just look on a different website, one with HTTPS at the beginning. HTTPS is much safer. I like this website called HTTPS dot a game dot com, let's order it, okay?
Sam, Sam honey, come here, please.
What's wrong?
Someone has an evil account, but it's not me. It is identity theft. They could use my info to steal stuff, what should I do?
It is okay. What we need to do is change your password and make it more secure. It should have capital letters, numbers, punctuation and other things. After that, they can knock it in.
Oh, there's someone at the door.
Ah, package for Joe. The info was lost, so I need you to silence for me.
But, Mom, should I do that? Is it insane?
Yes, it is okay. You are not on the internet, hackers may take you.
This game is great and safe, too.
Yeah, that's what I learned before something bad happened.
Why can't I see where that is? Okay. Should I show one more?
We're trying for one more.
Which one?
Give time for one more?
Didn't I show, I didn't show Henry?
Yes.
That's viral world two, right? All right, let's show it. Which one do you have?
Hello, I am an anti-bullying man, anti-bullying for short. Today, I will tell you the consequences and classification of bullying and cyberbullying. In fact, here is a case, now, let's head off to the scene. I am an anti-bullying superhero and I am best at stopping cyberbullying. Today, I will show you a case of bullying. Yeah, she is definitely being cyberbullied. However, she can't see me as I can only be seen by bullies. Let's go find out who the bully is. This is the first step, anti-bullying superhero. Go through the device to find the bully's current location.
Oh, oh, oh. I just want to be your friend. I believe I am bullied. This is a dangerous, who are you?
I am an anti-bullying superhero and I have come to stop you.
Again, I am not a liar, you have no proof.
Actually, yes, I do. Since I am an anti-bullying superhero, I can only be seen by bullies.
All right, but how are you planning on stopping me?
I won't stop you, the consequences will.
What consequences?
There are many. For example, suspension or expulsion from school, loss of friends, criminal charges, fines and also the guilt of knowing you called someone to feel sad. However, cyberbullying is not the only thing you need to worry about doing online. Also avoid sexing, identity theft, viruses and hacking.
Okay, I feel really bad. I will ask your apology.
Good, and remember, be appropriate online. Just to wrap it all up, avoid all of these things while online.
So, thank you. I wish I could show you the software, but, good job. The software is quite elaborate, you know, I could, if I had more time, I'd show you, but, I mean, they have, it's a lot like iMovie where you have a timeline and you, and, you know, they had to time the characters to talk at specific times and...
And their movements.
Yeah, their movements, it's very complex, I mean, so...
How long does something like that take to produce?
Um, two or three weeks, yeah. I'd say three weeks. I mean, yeah.
Meeting every other, meeting every other day.
Looks involved.
You know, I mean, but it, we combined the digital citizenship topics that, you know, first they were learning about that and then this was their way of showing their learning, so...
Will all seventh graders take this class?
Most of them. I would say about eighty or ninety percent of them do. If not, this year, they'll take it in the eighth grade.
Well, I would like to just comment that what a positive, um, message that they were sending through their videos as well. I mean, one was very instructive and it was just very good, positive messages that you were sending. So who knows what you guys are doing though?
You did really well. I'm very proud of you.
And our, our last presentation tonight is about French clubs. So Ms. Lahey will come, she teaches French and Spanish, as I said earlier, and she also runs a French club and a, and a Spanish club at the Soul Club. She has two eighth grade students with her tonight.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah, so we, uh, I think the French club has been a success so far. We've been able to combine the Spanish club sometimes. We did chocolate tasting, we did some, uh, cave painting last class, last time we had the French club. So I have a good group of kids that come frequently to the French club and I really try to make that connection that it's not just limited to Paris and croissants and monuments, but French really goes be, you know, across, all over the world, so we have a map up here. Uh, so the kids, all I did was get some Chromebooks. The kids made the whole presentation, they're gonna present the whole thing and they just picked out some things they thought were interesting about really going beyond just France and some places maybe we didn't know spoke French. Go ahead, guys. Ready?
French Around the World. By Anne Jones, Hannah Lord, Matt McGady. French Around the World. By Anne Jones, Hannah Lord, Matt McGady, Katie Gennings, Peter Du Pesta, Ben Navarro and Christopher Neary. North America. Territories. Canada, Haiti, Saint Martin, Saint Martinville, Saint Pierre and Miquel. The New Orleans area is the largest French-speaking region in the USA and the largest in the continent of the Aboriginal Canadian Territory of Quebec. Quebec's winter sport of choice is ice hockey and the summer sport of choice is soccer. In South America, there is one hundred to speak French, it's a French territory. It goes from there to Franciana. Its capital is Caen, has a population of two hundred fifty thousand. It's a tropical rainforest and it borders Brazil and Suriname. Africa. Certain African countries that speak French include Democratic Republic of the Congo, which has sixty-seven million people, Madagascar, which has twenty-one million people, Ivory Coast, which also has, what, twenty-one thousand people, twenty-one million people, and Cameroon, which has nineteen million people. That's one very common Africa. Tchadjolmene is a city in the African country Tushina. Tchadjolmene appeared in the movie Star Wars and was also named Tchadjolmene. Democratic Republic of the Congo actually has more French-speaking country, people than France itself. Season seventeen, a survivor appearing at Gabon. Europe. French, French is the only language, political English is spoken in five continents. French is the first or second language in four United Country regions and is spoken by a hundred twenty-five million people. The granddaddy of the French language, France, is the leading superpower in trade. The colors of flag represent three groups in pre-republican France. The blue stands for the Fordius, the white for the Carthage and red for the ability. There are many overseas car families from France. Learning a new language helps understand your native language and how it works. If you travel through the country, people speak a different language than you. You can't talk, you can talk to them, you're understanding. In Asia. Vietnam is the largest of the three colonial, colonial nations in Asia and others are Laos and Cambodia. Language is spoken by over five percent of the population. The French introduced coffee in the eighteen eighties. It has become one of the most integral parts of modern Vietnamese social culture. Chinese characters form the base of our Vietnamese. Alexander de Roes, one of the first French Catholic missionariesers who arrived in Vietnam, introduced the Latin script, which remains dominant in the country now. These are some of the sites that we use to value this information.
Thank you.
Do you wanna study French when you get to the high school next year? You're gonna study French? It's good. Yeah?
So, this may be a future, um, lesson topic for you. There's, the, the French are really making a big push into technology now. There's, um, they've, they've established a beachhead in Boston that's called the French Tech Hub.
Yeah.
And they're bringing all these little, um, these small French tech companies over. It's pretty interesting.
Cool.
And one of the most interesting company called Blue Frog Robotics, they're based in Paris and they have a, um, they have a, a new, a little companion robot named Buddy. So it's, and he speaks in French and it's, it's pretty cool, so it might be some things you can check.
That is, that is, I know, a lot of people don't know, if you're going into the business world and technology, French is really the language to know and trans, I mean, all these French companies coming here, we wanna be able to communicate with them, so that's really cool.
At the recent Computer Electronics Show, they had an entire hall dedicated to the, um, the French technology companies, so it's really growing rapidly there.
That's good to hear.
Great, well, that concludes our presentation. I'm sure you all wanna go home. Thank you for coming, very, the students, thank you for coming.
Ms. O'Connell, I just wanted to say, the content was outstanding and excellent, but the presentation by the students is also unbelievable. The kids to be able to get up in front of a crowd and people like this, they did an excellent, excellent job of presentation.
You really did, thank you. Thank you, teachers, for coming. Thank you for getting them here, parents, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
That's good, it was good. You wanna show off?
It's interesting, it really is.
That was very good, very good.
I'm just astounded at the, what they do with technology.
It's a whole new world.
It's incredible.
You know, you're talking twelve, thirteen years old.
I know.
Of course, I wouldn't get out of, I, I wouldn't get out of this.
But you're right, their ability to stand up and speak in front of a crowd.
That's what got...
Voiced, voiced.
Yeah.
So critical.
Yeah.
Mary spent the best sixteen years of his life in middle school.
And you're, you're good at it.
It was, it was good time. It's good being the oldest kid.
Yeah.
Thank you, you did a great job.
What's next?
Yeah.
You do the update, the MSB.
Superintendent Bernard, would you like to update us on the MSBC eight?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chairman, so, yes, of course, just a few things. Um, I wanna update you on the work continues to address, um, the... I'd be happy to, Madam Chairman, so, yes, of course, just a few things. Um, I want to update you on the work continues to address, um, the punch list items that remain on the middle school, high school project. I will just let you know that, um, Ms. O'Connell, Mr. LaPret and I are, are working, um, as recent as today, to identify some additional items of things that we see still needing attention, and I have scheduled, I, I've worked to schedule a meeting, uh, for later this week with our project manager and a representative of Gil Bain to make them aware of the things that we anticipate, uh, needing their attention, and my hope is that, uh, a significant amount of work will take place. While it's ongoing daily, my hope is a significant amount of work is going to happen over the February school vacation when the building is, you know, obviously much more vacant than it normally is, so, just to let you know that we are, I think, very, you know, I think we're pretty aware of the things that we see on a daily basis that still need some attention, and we're, we're raising those with the appropriate folks. Um, I also want to let you know that the temporary project office trailer, um, has been removed. There is, um, some dedicated office space that we've been able to make available to, um, the representative of, of PMA, our project manager, and Gil Bain, to work here, um, in the middle school site. That's, uh, middle school, high school site. That's working out well. It's nice to have them in close proximity to us, um, so when we need something, we're able to, to find them, uh, very easily. Uh, the installation of the gates for the, for the generator, the transformer, and, um, the dumpster enclosure, that work has begun, um, so that's, that's good news. Um, temporary fencing contractor has been in, working to secure areas down at the site of the former high school, um, to make sure that that area is secure, and they're removing, uh, any unnecessary, remaining unnecessary fencing. And weather permitting, um, which is a good thing, you know, again, I wrote this report for you back, um, the end of last week, but the weather continues to cooperate with us, and that's, um, that's, that's helping us to be able to, to move forward with the work that needs to be done to, um, install the drainage, um, lines down at the, the site of the former high school.
John, I, I know I've brought this up, I'm gonna say a half a dozen times, probably more, that second street light in on the access road is still not...
Yeah, it's, it's, they're aware. I mean, that's the best I can offer to you. There are a number of things that remain that I feel like, probably like all of you, or at least most of you, we've raised a number of times, the best I can offer to you is that they are aware of it, and my hope is that it's gonna get resolved sooner rather than later, but...
Okay.
I'm sorry I don't have a more definitive answer to give you, but it's...
All right.
It's a bit of a source of frustration, but, you know, I, I will say that folks are working with us to try to deal with things as efficiently as they can.
I, I think the important thing, John, is just what you said, that you and, uh, Mr. LaPret and Ms. O'Connell do not back off on anything. I don't care how frustrating it gets, it's continue to press them and make sure that we get things completed.
No, I agree, and I think it's fair, you know, I, I think there's some of the things that some people might look at and say that they're small or they're minor, but, you know, that we, we, we are, I think, making folks aware of everything that we feel they need to be aware of, so, and we'll continue to do so.
As you're well aware, the key is to have things show up on the punch list.
Correct.
And once they're on the punch list, they're not done until they finish clearing the punch list.
So, John, the poles that you see that are kind of at the, this side perimeter and the far side, is that for the temporary fencing?
No, I think the ones you're talking about are the per, the big, the real, that's the permanent.
That's permanent fencing.
The field fencing, yes. Okay.
I will turn it back to the high school and middle school, Mr. LaPret and Ms. O'Connell.
Well, thanks very much. Um, I think we wanted to kind of take an opportunity, uh, you know, interesting segue, to talk about what's, what's working at the school, um, and how we are maximizing the, the spaces that we have, uh, both from the high school perspective and from middle, middle school perspective.
You may want to.
And kind of start with the media centers.
Sure, I'll, I'll start. So, thank you for, for, to start with the library, because we were able to get our own librarian. So for the first time since I've been here, and I think for the first time in a long time in North Reading history, the middle school has a certified librarian, and boy are we working her hard. She has had nearly every single class into the library. I have a list here of social studies, English, Spanish, science, health, math, music, performing arts, and a bunch of different clubs have booked time to come into the library and use the library databases, use the library, um, you know, obviously all of the books and periodicals, uh, and the technology. So we are definitely using the librarian, and she's also pushing out into classrooms to offer her expertise with research when teachers ask for that. So both in and out, we are definitely using the library at the middle school.
I think what's, uh, what's another, another nice piece about the library is that it's such a large space, and you can really do a number of things in there with multiple groups. Um, when you're kind of entering, say, from the front lobby, that kind of right, uh, front right corner, there's a number of tables and chairs. As you kind of proceed into the middle area, there's a number, again, tables and chairs. We've had groups in both that kind of front right corner and in the middle separate groups. And then, as you kind of proceed to the back, um, back right corner, back in here, there's another, probably eighteen, eighteen chairs for a smaller group, and then there's the library classroom on the other side of the library, um, offices. That's kind of an enclosed classroom setting. So there's, I mean, there's, it's an active place. There's, uh, multiple groups in there using multiple areas.
All day long.
Yeah, all day long.
Can students access the library just freely after school, or do you guys go there?
We were just able to, to work on having the library open with supervision on Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursday afternoons, so...
Until, until quarter to four. So that's, uh, that's been a nice treat, I know, for a lot of, uh, a lot of students to be able to get some extra time in the library. Onto the, the fitness center. Um, again, uh, I think you're gonna hear a common theme, that, uh, the spaces are, uh, you know, are amazing spaces, and that you can get multiple groups of students in there, uh, kind of moving freely about, uh, certainly with regard to exercise. Um, I mean, I, it's funny, I always feel like I'm here pretty early when I pull in at five fifty-seven AM, and there's already kids ready to get into the, uh, fitness center ahead of me. Uh, so, uh, they're here really for, for, for their workout routines. Uh, they're in the afternoon with, uh, coaches and teams. Uh, some students are, are, you know, uh, in there, uh, for afternoon workouts.
Yeah, and all of the middle school students, PE is required all year, and all of them have been through an introduction to the appropriate machines and how to use them for middle schoolers, so every single middle school student has been exposed to the fitness center. There was a time, maybe a few months ago, when in the afternoon, much probably to the chivalry of some high school students, there were way more middle school students using the facility in the afternoon than the high school students. I think that's certainly a lesson, but they were really excited about being able to use some of the equipment, and once they knew how to do it and knew that they could, they were accessing that after school.
Seems like a lot of activity, every time you're riding, helps a lot of people with it.
I think it's important to make it clear that we have someone monitoring that, that's on staff.
I was just gonna say, we, we have our, uh, uh, our, uh, PE instructor who has some certs in strength in, uh, fitness training, and is getting additional certs in that area, monitoring in the afternoon, um, with, with of course, uh, another, another, uh, fitness instructor in the morning.
And to add to that, we had, uh, parents, middle school parents sign off on some information that they read over, so they were clear that their students were, you know, were going to be accessing some of these machines and have been trained to use them.
And supervised in the morning sessions.
Right. And, uh, you know, now with the lofty area, uh, a little more accessible for, uh, fitness and activities, uh, it's, again, it's a increasingly popular space. And then into the gym proper, uh, which I think, e- every time, every time I go in, I, you know, I can't say I've been here as, as long as, uh, as some, some other people in the room, um, but, uh, sometimes you go into that gym, and you just think, wow, remember the old gym? It was just like you were in a cave. Uh, and just the, just the lighting and the, the brightness, uh, it's just fascinating, and I, and I've been to other, you know, other schools and other new buildings, and they're not nearly close to the, like, kind of the crisp lighting and, and the, uh, the space that we have. I know there's a lot of use for the dividers to help create, uh, different settings for different programs and different classes, and, um, you know, it, it, it might be the, uh, the, um, the most popular, other than the library during the day, the gym in the afternoon.
There really hasn't been any issues with sharing the space. Uh, our teachers are very creative in how to use the auxiliary gyms. They're using that, that for yoga. They're using, as we said, the fitness center, so, so we've really been able to work out a system where there's classes running constantly, and then...
Isn't that what's good, where I was gonna ask, how has it worked out with having health class and PE class both middle school and high school at the same time? I, I know it's been like before, so, uh, there's been no problem with scheduling.
We have our dedicated two health rooms, so, the middle school health room is used all day long, as I assume the high school is as well.
Right, right.
And then the, the PE spaces, the, the four gym spaces are used, but then with the addition of the fitness center and the auxiliary gym, there's been really no issue. So when we had pep rally, there were some middle school kids who were, they weren't really sure what to do when the high school had a pep rally, because they just, there were a lot of high school kids in the gym, and it was funny, but we, we are using the space very well, I think, no issues.
I think one of the things we did well was create the, uh, the, the vision of the gym space of the four separate instructional areas with the four curtain, with the curtains. You don't see that every place. And the other thing is obviously having the four team basket, motorized basketball, which I don't think anybody else in the country has, but it's afforded us the opportunity to let the, the public, particularly basketball, maximize the, uh, the...
I echo what AJ had to say. It, it, I don't miss the days when I go to away basketball games, and I'd say, why can't we have a place like this? Friday night, the boys played at Masco, and they played in the Ma, I don't know why, they played the Masco, the old gym that Masco has, and it was smaller than our old gym, and I was like, how are they gonna play this game in here? You know, the stands are, right, there's two feet from the end line or the, or the sideline to the stands, and our, I think our kids, I know they realize what a great benefit they have in having this facility now, because there's just, I don't think there's one better in the Cape Ann League. There's not one many better around this area.
I would agree, tough to beat.
Yeah.
Uh, into the music room, the band room downstairs. Um, you know, I think this is, again, a space that gets a lot of use, um, and, and, you know, where there, there are these things that at least, for me, I, I feel like I'm learning new things all the time, that you can actually record in the band room and then hear the recording, um, with the technology that's infused down in this room and in the chorus room.
Thank you.
So, uh, it's a great, again, like, opportunities to, uh, maximize the, both the technology and the space for instruction.
So this built, this built-in recording capability in the rooms?
In the chorus room and the band room.
Oh, nice.
So you can hit record, play it, and then go play it back, and the kids can hear it.
There's also a great piano lab. I don't know if you've seen it, with keyboards and, and pianos, that all of them have their own recording devices, so kids can play and record, and that can be used for assessment, but they can also use it for self-assessment, and they have, um, smart music, and I think it's Finale, and all types of different software to help perfect their, and, um, different types of software for composition. So kids can create their own music and record it and tweak it, and that's in between the, uh, there's a middle school general music room that's used all the time, in addition to the band room and chorus room, so, people, I think, forget sometimes downstairs is such an amazing space for creativity and art, and obviously, we're using it to the max.
Is there an opportunity for perhaps some of the older middle schoolers, like eighth graders, to participate in the high school band? I mean, is there time allotted in the schedule for them to kind of...
I don't think that's something we've discussed yet.
No.
I don't know, I don't know how that would work, but it's something, something that we could, we could talk about.
We could certainly talk about it as an after-school, as a combined after-school option. Our band teacher is the high school band teacher, so it would have to be some scheduling that worked around his schedule as well.
So, um, just as we keep going here, there's gonna be, obviously, class, we're not going every classroom, we're just showing some of the unique spaces of the building. Um, and both the high school and the middle school have seminar spaces, or at least one, one large seminar space in the middle school, I think.
Yeah, we have one upstairs in the sixth grade.
Okay, okay. Uh, but I think, you know, uh, what, what I'm finding out is that these, certainly at the high school, uh, these spaces are being used as kind of exactly as they're designed for these collaborative learning spaces, uh, kids working on experiments, or, um, you know, small, small group activities, um, study, uh, study sessions. So, uh, they are, they are very popular, and they get a lot of use.
I think at, at the middle school, the students are just realizing that it's okay for them to be in those spaces and utilize them, because I'll often walk by and say, hey, what are you doing? And at first they... You know, they're working on a project.
It's not what are you doing?
It's okay, our teacher said we could be, you know, so they're getting used to the idea that they have some independency, and as you heard tonight with, with many of the presentations, that collaboration piece and that teamwork piece is so integral to all of our curriculum, that the ability to have this space is, is great for the kids to learn at an early age. That's what they're supposed to do. Talk about their work, share their ideas, and come up with even better ideas together.
You might even call it a twenty-first century skill.
They might.
It is, it's early enough. I don't know if there's, uh, if there's any, any, uh, place in the building that gets, uh, that you have as much experience in, uh, in this, in this space here, but, uh, you know, an immensely popular, uh, location here for both the high school and the middle school populations. I know, um, you know, we could, it's just, uh, it's fantastic. We, I, I had, um, somebody was at the building just, um, oh, it was, uh, it was the gentleman from, uh, who spoke about the SAT, uh, who had asked, you know, wow, this is great in school, and I said, well, you think the Performing Arts Center or something, so he, he came into here, and he's like, oh my goodness, this is, this is just fantastic, so. And he's been, he was a guy that goes to a lot of schools. Uh, he was blown away.
I've found that teachers are sharing the space, so two eighth grade science teachers may come in and do a lesson together, two seventh grade social studies teachers may come in and do a lesson together, so if they each have twenty-five kids, that's fifty kids, two teachers, amazing technology, and again, it's that opportunity that instead of having just one small group, you get to have twice the size and a, and a space that's designed for that. So teachers are signing out the space and using it regularly, and again, we haven't had a problem with sharing the spaces. I have my faculty meetings here every, um, second Monday, and, and you have yours on the first, and so teachers are using it. We, you know, we obviously want the teachers to be using it to model the technology and how to use the space so that they will come in and, and use it, and they are.
Have you had a classroom, um, teach, like, across town or across the country?
Not yet.
Yet, not yet?
We, we had, we had one interactive, uh, you know, kind of seminar, which was great. It worked.
California? Was it Calif?
California.
California, yeah, yeah.
The, uh, Performing Arts Center, and kind of a down moment here, I know, quiet.
Rare.
But, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, this is, this is exactly about a crown jewel for the school. It's, uh, it's amazing.
I, I would just add, and I'm not sure of your numbers, but I'm able to fit my entire student body and staff in the Performing Arts Center.
Six hundred fifty-six seats.
So we've got six hundred and ten students right now, and with, with staff. We can fit, it's tight, but one of our core values is community, so when we can come together as a community in one space and celebrate, whether it's a Veterans Day assembly, or the Geography Bee, we just recently had our annual Geography Bee, and for the first time, it wasn't in the cafeteria, where only social studies classes could come. We made it a whole school community event, and it was fantastic. So every chance we get to do that, I remind the students of how lucky they are, because I think sometimes they don't realize what, you know, what it was like, and, and we're using it. Every chance we get, and, and again, sharing hasn't been an issue. It's just takes extra planning.
The picture in the paper of that looks so cool, because it looked like, um, a professional game show, almost.
It was.
When you saw that on the stage.
It was high-tech.
I'm, I'm curious, did you have it, did we think to have it, um, filmed for NORcam or taped for NORcam, or...
I'm not sure if it was filmed. They'll find out.
But it might be some, in the future, I think it's something, given, given that we have this, um, facility now, that we could put it on cable, you know, not live, but at a later date, and it'd be fun for the kids to be able to see themselves.
And the, some of the questions were tough.
Yeah.
What did you say? Questions?
Oh, good segue.
The, the space I'm curious about, are we doing anything at all with the so-called TV screen?
I was gonna ask the same question.
Um, because again, that's a space that seems like, you know, we should probably try to take advantage of it.
Oh, we are. Do you wanna, do you wanna?
Sure. So, so we are in the, in the, um, beginning stages of working on, uh, presenting to you a video production class for the fall for the middle school. We had a retirement in our Performing Arts Department, and so we, we filled that position, and it will be Performing Arts for the remainder of the year, but the person that we hired has a film background and a video production background, so the hope is that when we come to you to present later this spring, we will have solidified exactly what that would look like for the middle school students to be using, the studio for announcements, for PSAs, for filming things like the Geography Bee.
We'd like to see us take that to the next level and see how we can develop, because it's kind of the big space that we have.
Well, I know Patrick, Patrick has a pretty strong background in that area also, I believe, um, and I don't know what kind of, um, tie-in we could do with the NORcam folks also, because obviously there's a lot of expertise there, um, in running a studio, since they have their own studio over on Bow Street, so... So, but I was going to ask the same question because it seems like we've got a lot of great equipment down there. And I know we can't use everything from the get-go, but that's one area I'd like to see, you know, improve the use.
I could just, could I add something to that? So, and we do, we do, two things I would add. One is we do run a course at the high school level, and so we're looking to kind of make that transition a little bit better from middle school to high school. And I would say about a month ago, about a month ago, Kathy and A.J. and I and Patrick met with the video production teacher that we have at the high school, Mrs. King, to talk about where that program was at. It was about a month or six weeks ago, I'd say, right? Where the program is at now, where, I'll use your term, Jerry, about where, you know, what's it going to take to get it to the next level? And I think it's just been a matter of, it's new and there's a lot of technology there. But I think it was a productive meeting, and I think the hope is that we're going to start to see that to flourish even more.
Was it a couple years back that the students went to NORcam to learn how to do?
They had, there was a club, I think.
We've had both.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had both. We've had NORcam come here. Phil Hailey has been very, Phil, you know, I think was sometimes is at these meetings, has been very good about linking up with our, with our students and trying to work with them. But it's, it's an area where, you know, I think we can expect to see some growth in the next, you know, several months maybe, leading into September.
One comment I wanted to make, I was here for, I was here a couple of weeks ago, and it was during high school lunch. And, you know, so I'm walking down, I think John was here, a few other people, and I'm trying to imagine the chaos with the lunch tables in the hallway. The kids were better behaved than most restaurants I've been in. They were quiet, they were respectful, they were eating, and they had basic, I mean, there was no soup, there wasn't anybody like hovering over them, they were just, and then while that was going on, I saw the sixth graders come down for lunch, and the high school kids completely ignore the sixth graders, and the sixth graders completely ignore the high school kids and just march right into the lunchroom. And it just was like, wow, this is working exactly the way they said it was going to work.
Yeah, I want to compliment you guys because that, I think at some point in time we were planning this project, was somewhat of a consideration of some people, maybe even some parents. And it seems like, and we only have really five months of experience, but it seems like it's been seamless with the middle school, high school. It hasn't, it hasn't seen a single issue of it aware.
No.
You guys have done a great job of sharing the space, scheduling the space, just Nelson making it work exactly as it was intended.
Thank you.
Patrick just said that my staff has commented on a regular basis how nice it is to see the high school students and how respectful and polite they are when they see their middle school teachers. It used to be that they didn't really see them anymore, and they will come and say hello, and they will greet them, and it's been really great. And the middle school teachers, it's just wonderful for them to see them grown up. And that has, again, it's that piece, it's a community piece.
It's an added bonus, really.
It's been wonderful.
Couple more comments. I think Jerry and I came up with a good idea for a fundraiser, which is to have faculty races down the entire middle school hallway. You know, we can probably raise some money on that. The other thing is that I want to know how much, Kathy, you missed the large group room.
This is a big, big.
It's a big improvement.
LGR.
The LGR.
No longer.
Which just was.
No slides, you noticed.
Yes. Just not a good room. But I actually had asked for this to be on the agenda because I wanted to see how we were using the school, and it looks like we're using it, I wouldn't say to its fullest capacity, but pretty close right now. I know we're at fullest capacity in terms of students, the number of students here, I know that much. And that's the other thing that people should know. We have probably a hundred more students in the school than it's built for. This high school's built for seven forty, the middle school, I think, is five something, five.
Six, six forty-six?
Right now, it's about six-ten.
But what it's, it's probably, probably built for five eighty, six hundred. So we've got fifty to a hundred more people in here than, because that's what the MSBA allows.
We're about sixty over at the high school.
Yeah.
Seven, we're at eight oh one, I think, right?
Eight oh two.
Eight oh two.
So we've got sixty-two more students in the high school than it's built for, and it's accommodating those students, at least space-wise.
The space is not an issue. And again, all the spaces in the, in the school were basically designated by the MSBA.
Right.
They told us how much gym space we could have, how much, how many seats we could have in the Performing Arts Center, how big our media center could be. So we worked around that, but I've got to say that the utilization of the space in this building, we got a lot of room, a lot of space out of the building.
We did.
And the fact that there's eight hundred students and it was designed for seven forty is not an issue, not at all.
There's a lot of flexibility to the spaces, which is a good thing.
Yeah. I just had a question. I know you talked about the collaboration space outside the science rooms and everything, but I was just wondering, how has the robotics been going? Is there not a mad rush for, to do it, but has there been more interest in the middle school students or?
It's the same, it's the same schedule that it's always been, so it's just like tech ed. Susan Masaccio teaches tech ed.
Okay.
Chip Osmond presented last year, does robotics. So it's something that's offered to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. There is a robotics club that runs after school. So they have a beautiful, much bigger classroom than they, than they've ever had. So when it comes to, you know, designing the obstacle courses and things that the robot have to go through, they have much more space to be able to do that. But the scheduling hasn't changed.
Okay. Has the interest grown then in the after-school club?
I don't think the club has gotten any bigger, no.
That's interesting. I kind of thought, you know, a bigger facility, so to speak, might enhance more people to have.
It still may. Been only six months, it's still there. But a beautiful space, both of those labs.
Oh, they're unbelievable spaces.
Where the, where the gymnasium was.
Yeah.
And the cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
Beautiful cafeteria.
This has, this has been a very interesting experience for me because I've never been involved in a school project before.
Never want to be involved in one again.
Well, probably not, no, probably not, because I don't want to see any more in this town. But the, the thing that I appreciated was, you know, we sat down with the architect in the beginning and worked on what spaces we need and what classrooms, and did the whole programming of the school. And then watching it move along through the construction and now seeing it in operation. And, and as Mel said, you know, it looks like we're coming up toward fully utilizing the facility. A little ways to go, but the interesting thing is you go back to the programming, and we, we talked with experts about that. And they, and the, the way it's moved along is kind of as planned. It is following the plan, and it's very satisfying. I think, you know, the, when, when this room is talking to someplace on the other side of the world in French or something, and that will be interesting. And the capacity is there, and important to move toward that. That TV studio downstairs, I'm dying to see that in operation. But that's the best TV studio in the state, I think, other than maybe, maybe major broadcasters. But there's a, it's very satisfying to watch the whole process from the very beginning, move along through all the stages, and then finally being utilized.
And the community use of Main Street too. We have another event coming up March second.
Taste of Metro North, yeah.
Yeah, it's going to use Main Street.
I, I don't come here all the time, but I'm here often enough so that I get a sense of the amount of use of the facility. And this place rocks all the time.
It really does.
Mr. Penus?
It's moving from six in the morning to ten at night.
Madam Chairman, just to Mr. Bauer's point, it's making me think of, Michael and I went to the MSBA board meeting last week about the little school roof. I'm going to speak to you about that a little bit later tonight. But to the point about the educational programming and the vision, they actually, there were a number of schools, school districts at that meeting that were in the process of where we were a few years ago, with the, with the acceptance of the statement of interest in moving along, getting them into the pipeline, so to speak. But they actually took time, and that, that room was crowded. It was a standing room only crowd, there were a lot of people. But for those projects that were where we were several years ago, the board actually took a moment to stop, and they asked one of their board members, who I would consider to be kind of the, he was, he's a DESE representative on the board, to speak about, and to remind those schools that were just starting the process to put the time in to their educational programming and to their educational vision. Think about where you want to be several years from now and how are you going to get there? And just, to your point, you know, the more time you spend to front-load that, the more, the happier you're going to be with your project in the end.
Not, not too many people.
Remember that?
Not too many people understand just how much that planning, that planning was done.
And the staff.
But there was a lot, a number of sessions, and then we brought it back and went, went through it. Staff, staff commented on it, had input to it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, things that were in the original plan, I know that the sixth grade was tucked away on the low level, and the eighth grade was on the high level, and we modified that, and it's worked out well. There was a lot of, a lot of input to it, and I'm so, so pleased to see that it's really working.
We weren't perfect in doing that, but I think we were probably as good as anybody.
Mm-hmm.
I give Kathy Willis a lot of credit for that too, and obviously John and Kathy because they were involved in it, but that, that makes a big difference when you can walk in.
It did.
And you're still going to hear complaints from people. But overall, I think the way that the programmatic space worked out was excellent, yeah.
Largely so, yeah.
And our architect frankly did a very, very good job of pulling that off. I know they get a lot of criticism, but that's what architects are for. And, but they did a lot of good stuff here, a lot of good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
You want the song?
I'd like to introduce Wayne Harderker, the supervisor of Building and Grounds. And welcome, yeah, you can come on now.
Wayne's got a toy.
Yeah.
I know, he's got a toy.
Who is playing with it? I've heard it beep beep beep.
Yeah. It's like a Gaga counter.
I know, I'm wondering what it's counting.
Wayne needs a microphone. Oh, yeah. You can sit right there.
Want to take this?
This is a gas detector. He's recently at the hood school.
Beep 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 beep.
Have an dioxide thing. So if you blow across something.
Oh, yeah.
I'll say beep 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 beep.
I've had indigestion all day, so that's amazing.
I find, it's going up.
If you're dead.
I'm too digested.
Quiet. Wow, that's good. Turn on it.
It finds gases.
Okay.
It just detects CO2, carbon dioxide. But I said in the hood school, you used to recently have a carbon dioxide thing, and you can trace it right down to.
Yeah.
Very nice. Interesting.
Nice to be here. I'm in my seventeenth year here in North Reading, which has been fast, and every year gets faster and.
And the last year has been sixteen of those years, bringing these two schools online.
Last winter was my most challenging, probably most challenging winter. Roof loading, fire exits, plowing, just it was a real challenge for us. We spent a lot of money too, so. But my, my daily challenges haven't changed in my seventeen years. My big four are clean, safe, warm, and dry. John knows. Clean, safe, warm, and dry. It's a daily challenge, which I take seriously almost twenty-four hours a day.
You haven't gotten the change that we requested on that?
I was just going to say.
Clean, safe, warm, cool, and dry.
I got it, and I added cool.
Did you add cool? All right.
Cooling. I added cooling. I did, did, I did make a report out, and I'll review it. We currently have twenty employees in our department, fifteen school-based custodians, one point five grounds workers, two van drivers with life, seventy licenses, one point five maintenance workers. The point five grounds worker and the point five maintenance worker is the same person. Great job for us. Chet Spiny was with us for twenty-one years and just retired recently, senior grounds person. A key, key person who did a hundred different things in the course of a day. He retired. Our senior custodian at the high school, Julie Spurnight, took a job and became the building superintendent for the town. And I'm told she's doing a great job. It's pretty, I think that for us, it's someone in our department that would move on to a job like that, I think it's pretty cool, so. Paul Sonia took over the Chet Spiny job, and Daniel Farman took over for Julie. Daniel Farman now works in this area, is cleaning duties. He's a, an afternoon, evening custodian. I put some statistics down as far as cleaning areas, twenty-eight thousand to thirty-two thousand square feet per person per day. Maintenance is kind of a moving target, so I'm not too concerned about the maintenance part of it. Mike Conley and I, with John's help, we analyzed all the floors of all the schools to see if they're meeting those standards. A week ago today, we made several staff changes to try to level off the playing field, and it affected all the schools as far as staffing, moving people around. The goal is to level the playing field and obviously to clean the schools as best we can, but it, this school is, we've been moving people around quite a bit, a part-timer here, a morning guy here, trying to get away from that, so more, it's more structured. So right now, this school, effective last Monday, we have three-day people and five-night people to do the entire campus.
Both schools, both middle school and high school?
One hundred and seventy thousand square feet, and that's still being worked out. The first Monday of every month here, I meet with A.J., Kathy, Buddy Miller, and myself. We did, we met this morning. We allow the whole school, we lay out the whole school, what can we do better? And that's, that's a monthly challenge. Let me just move along here. The summer staffing has worked out very well for us with college, high school, or members of the teaching staff. And it's very cost-effective, very productive. Estudial help, grounds help, and painting. Most of our painting, we don't hire a company to do it, we do it in-house. And we do some amazing, high-performance, high-quality, it's just non-stop all summer, so it's pretty good. Buildings and grounds issues, we continue with the Maya Rewards Program. It saves us money. We've been very successful over the years with the Maya Grants. Maya Grants Rewards Program, we've gotten in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars in grants for S-Best of Safety Awareness Training, Roof Inspection Program, Infrared Heat Loss Camera. It's a camera you can, you can, you can look at something through an infrared lens and see if something's hot. Septic System Preventive Maintenance Program, Air Quality Testing and a Combustible Gas Detector, which is something like one of these. We upgraded our fleet. We placed a two thousand Chevy Astro van with a new school seventeen van. The existing two thousand and five van was moved to food service. It's, it's, it's a, it's a program we've continued, and it works pretty awful. And a challenge this year is how are we going to clean this campus? The patios, campus, and there's a half mile of sidewalk here. So we, with the help of Mike Prisco, who gave us a demonstration of his piece of equipment, and with the help of Mike Conley, we have leased for two months a Bobcat, it's called a Toolcat. It's, right now, it's sitting down in the loading dock, and I guess my hope is we never use it, but we have. So take a look at it if you want. It really is, it's, the goal is in this, is of July one to buy a brand new one, which will have a snow blower on it, a sixty-inch snow blower, a sweeper, so you can sweep patios and things, and a snow bucket. And it really is going to be quite productive for us. We could probably use it everywhere, so.
Wayne, am I not, you did, it has been used once though, correct?
Used a couple of times.
And we were pleased with it?
Very pleased.
It was a good trial for us.
Did very well.
Yeah.
Very productive, it's very handy, you can, you can, you can drive it off four wheels. It really is very productive.
And your initial assessment is that we may have saved some money with snow removal costs for labor?
What we normally would do, we may have to, in the future, we'd hire contractors to help us remove snow, especially at the bachelor, and open this area here where we would pile and, and open this area here where we would pile it up in spots. With, with a Toolcat, you can just blow it out of the way, depending on the quantity of snow, but right now it's already saved us some money, so.
And now, is, is it true that you can't use salt on the plaza?
Yes.
The first year, the first year of any new concrete, we learned this the hard way in a couple of spots here. Any, any product other than sand on new concrete will cause it to spall or pit. If you put anything on there, it will cause it, ice to melt. As it, as it thaws and refreezes, it causes the concrete to pop. If you take a look at a loading dock or the entrance of the hood school, you'll see where we inadvertently use ice melter on new concrete. So generally, the first year, no ice melt. Sand, now sand doesn't, doesn't melt, doesn't cause anything to melt, but it will, it will not just harm the concrete. And it's, it's, is it, is it great? No, it's messy and it's, it, it tracks into the school and it messes up our tile floors, but, uh, right now, that's, that's what we're doing and it's, it's working okay.
It's working out.
Of course, the weather's been quite.
So the, the brush on the Bobcat would help.
That would help us to sweep it, take down a bare concrete. I know John mentioned this, um, pursuing replacement, three-quarters of the, uh, little school roof, A wing and, A wing and B wing at the little school roof. Mass School Building Authority is still, still in a ready to repair program, offers a program, and we're hopefully gonna get forty-eight percent reimbursement. Uh, I think John may have talked about that in a bit. We have three, and now they're four years old, high-efficiency condensing boilers at the little school. I, I may need to, I can fine-tune them. Sometimes it's a little cool, I do tend, tendency to run my schools a little cool, but, uh, um, it's, it's basically to, to keep the schools evenly heated. And these condensing boilers are quite, quite impressive. We have an ongoing proposal and process in place with town funding to keep removing asbestos floor tile. So the hood school and the little school are the two schools remaining that have any asbestos in them. Generally, it's floor tile. And that's just an ongoing project that'll probably go on until it's all gone, it may not be, all be gone, but we, we manage, we manage it closely and safely and it's not a problem for us. And we're looking into replacing the little school gym floor, which is pretty well worn out.
I was gonna say, if there is any project we can do in this district that we can afford, that floor is.
Pretty sad.
Pretty sad.
You can't clean it, it's hard to clean, uh, probably with a floor like the hood school or the bachelor's.
Do we have, we have any idea what that kind of floor would cost?
I don't know.
No?
We. There were some quotes that were provided.
Yeah.
As part of the budget process.
Assuming it's pretty expensive.
It's part of small, it's small capital.
Yeah.
Um, request that were certainly looked at.
It's probably six thousand square feet.
Yeah. But just moving forward, that, that floor from the beginning, um.
It's, it's like a plastic floor.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was never a good idea.
Never, yeah.
Never.
A ball doesn't bounce on it. Before I came on.
In three years, four years before I came on, so I, um, no, but it just wasn't a good idea and it just is not a good floor for.
Ball doesn't bounce around on it, it's kind of pocketed.
Almost like tiles or something, interlocking.
Plastic tiles.
Ball park estimate of like twenty thousand.
No, that's not bad.
That's not.
So, I mean, hopefully that's enough. Uh, hood school, if you have any questions, please ask me. I hope you do ask me some questions and I'll, I think I'm all prepared, but. Uh, we just completed a project with Automatologic to automate the hood boiler room. The hood boiler room only, we've automated that. Not, not the rest of the school, but in nineteen ninety-nine, when the school was rebuilt, um, there was a honeywell Excel system put in there, an energy management system with pretty archaic and, um, we found some money to automate the boiler rooms with Automatologic. Automatologic software is the same as what we have here and a little in the back, so it's, it's, it's pretty much universal. But it's only the boiler room. So at five-thirty in the morning, I get up and check the schools and I can check all the schools and just see what's going on. I can make adjustments and I have, you know, and, and it's, 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 I've been after this a long time and it's coming into focus a little bit at a time and we've, we've made some really good drains up there, so. Um, gym lighting, we may upgrade the gym lighting, um, similar to what we have here, but there's even newer technology than our gym, which, our gym is T-five fluorescents. There's newer technology called LEDs. I've seen some of those, they're pretty amazing. High longevity, even longer than T-fives, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years. We did complete an asbestos abatement project at the hood this past summer. Removing floor tile and, and tile and under, under carpet. This is all completed per state regulations, very safe, uh, and no problems. In another project, the town approved, we're, we're starting and continuing a major repaving project at the hood school on all of the paving. So if you look at the playground and the roadway out back of the school to the mards, it's all been redone. Most of it was the help of the, our own DPW department, it's, it's pretty cool, so.
Wayne?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, if I, did you want to mention, you did a nice project over there in the summer with the stage too at the hood school?
Oh, yeah. I never thought, another, another project we wanted to get done, the stage at the hood school, the cafeteria and stage, which is pretty well eaten up. Uh, we've been messing around, playing, trying to, trying to take care of it, but we, we got it done this year. It came out, we had a company come in who've done work for us before, ripped it, ripped, one-man operation, ripped it all out, put it in pressure-treated, I thought maybe it was dirt under it, but it's not, it was concrete. Uh, we did find quite a bit of damage from termites and things. We treated it all.
Came out very nice.
I'll just note, that was done with, um, the extraordinary maintenance budget. We were able to get that budget line item funded again, it had been cut a couple of years ago. And this fiscal sixteen, we got fifteen thousand put into that budget and that's a, a type of project that qualifies that we were able to do and it came up.
It's, 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 it's so good to have a, a funding source for some of these projects that come up now and then like that. Take a look at that hood, that floor up there, the guy did a terrific job, pre-finished hardwood. It looks great, really, nice job. Continue on to the bachelor school, every year I mention this, another year, and now it's year ten.
Can't believe that.
Well, it's fast.
Year ten.
Sure is.
Continues to be a well-designed and efficiently operating school. We spend very little of the maintenance budget on that school, very little. I check that school daily as for all heating, ventilating, and if it's, if it's either pale green or green on my screen, and it's, it's, it's in pretty good shape. And I think that's a real plus, if like, if I checked all the schools and they're all color-coded and if they all look like that color, then I'm confident I'm not gonna get calls about, we're hot, we're cold, we're hot, we're cold. And it really, it's, it continues to be a well-designed, well-operating, efficient, low-maintenance budget of school. It, it's, it's in year ten, which is hard to believe, so.
It was a well-built and designed school, Wayne.
Yep.
It absolutely was.
One, one thing we did move this past summer, we replaced the gas water heaters in the boiler room because we were getting some carbon monoxide leakage. We replaced them with electric water heaters. It was done over the course of the summer. There was never a problem, any safe or anything like that, so, um, that issue is off the table. One thing we deal with almost every year is broken slate on the roof. Broken slate are inherent on slate roofs. We do have a stockpile of slate left over from that job down at the high school garage. And we, we used sixty of them this past summer. We didn't have to buy new slate. They're, they're the same color and it's, we replaced them and.
I had a question in regards to that, how many break every year and how many spares do you have? I mean, do you foresee you have like a ten-year supply or?
Hopefully, over time, it just stop breaking. Generally, the, I'm surprised we, this many, we, we haven't done like two years, so, you know, maybe thirty per year. There should be, it should drop, drop off to pretty much zero after a while.
Are they had to replace, Wayne, or?
Yeah, it's quite a project. It's quite, they're fragile, we gotta be careful getting up there, we need a special lift and you can't be walking around on them and, uh.
Now, do you find like the heavier, the winter more break? Does it have anything to do with the snow?
No, no, it's just moving structural, hot days, cold days.
Okay.
It is, it is a challenge, but we, at least we have plenty, we do have plenty of spares, so.
Good.
Uh, high school, middle school, uh, this past September, the entire two hundred and seventy thousand square foot campus opened as one campus. Common, as AJ and Kathy showed, common gyms, gym cafeterias, media center, and performing arts center. Stuff that wasn't on the picture, but the three, four million BTU boilers, they're pretty high, high BTU boilers, very efficient, and the two, three hundred ton, this is big stuff. I mean, you take, if you get a chance, take a look down that boiler room, three hundred ton chillers.
Down there, plenty of time.
They control the heating and the cooling in the entire campus with very high efficiency. Uh, one of, one of the advantage, advantages in this existing school and also the middle school is displacement ventilation and such that in all the other schools, if you go in a classroom and see a unit ventilator which supplies, you know, air. And, and, and if you go in any classroom and just, you won't see those. Everything's up on the roof, for better or worse, it's up on the roof. So all of the air coming into the classrooms, if you look on the wall, you'll see a large grate, that's the supply, there's probably two. Every, every low flow, you put your hand on it, you feel just, you can barely feel air moving, but it's such a large area. So how it works, the, the heating or cooling will come into the room, flow across the floor, and gravity will take it up to the, uh, all of the products of breathing and through the, and exhaust through the roof. There's nineteen units on the roof. Each one has about twenty doors on it, all these access doors, so it, uh, it is, it is pretty amazing. But that, in, in the classrooms, there's really no sound other than the teaching atmosphere, so. Um, all of the software we have is now the latest version of Automatologic, it's version six point oh. I went to some more classes, how do you control things efficiently and occupied, unoccupied, and they're really, it's, it's quite sophisticated. I, I'm hoping some more of my staff will be going, able to go to class because it, it's quite, quite impressive. It's time-consuming to make it so it runs up, runs properly. Another one of my goals would be to get some help on that, um, down the road. Additional help was monitoring Automatologic, not just here, but in all our schools. Because all the software is, you look on the screen, all the schools pop up. It's all the same software, so it's pretty cool. Questions, comments? We are, we're still seeking Lead Gold, which is a high-efficiency school. We're not quite there yet, but I think we'll make it. And we are working with the light department for some, maybe possibly some solar applications, or maybe not, maybe yes. And also, uh, we are also on a demand shedding program by light department. So if I get a notification, say, in the summertime, and the, and the, expecting a, a, a maximum demand for energy or cooling at say five o'clock, I may be able to shut some things off and I have. And it saves us, soon as it, soon, if, if our demand drops and there's a demand meter that ties into light department, it drops, we start saving money, so it's, it is pretty cool.
What was that, the man charge on the monthly invoice?
The monthly, the monthly demand charge. Questions, comments?
Well.
Go ahead.
The, uh, the last year and a half has really been challenging for Wayne, trying to incorporate all this new, uh, technology into his daily responsibilities and duties. Um, it's not just the HVAC, it's the wastewater treatment plant, it's the additional square footage of space that he's had to deal with.
There's a rapid learning curve here.
Yeah.
Treatment plant is, is major, it's major technological advancement such that we have to be careful what we dump in any drain. Very, very careful. There's, um, we have tight tanks now, which all of the waste from the science labs.
Yeah.
Um, goes into a tight tank, we have to monitor the flow and the quantity, so we make sure we don't, we pump it on a frequent basis. And with these three grease, grease interceptor tanks in the front loading dock area, we just had those pumped recently. And they did say that very little grease, that's pretty good from the kitchen sample, so. But there's a rapid learning curve here, a lot to learn.
And it just, the, the, the additional responsibilities, I mean, and it, and it, we tend to forget, it's just not this campus. Wayne's got three other school buildings that he has to pay equal attention to, so. It's, I've, I've seen Wayne over the last couple of years when we go to, uh, construction meetings, when Cliff and I are there at the construction meetings and, you know, see some of the frustration events and, and how hard he works at getting things just the way they're supposed to be, so. I think, uh, I think Wayne and his staff have done a tremendous job.
I think the only time that Wayne doesn't get a phone call in a meeting that I'm in is when he's here making these presentations.
Yeah.
Uh, every other time, he gets two or three phone calls.
Yeah, his phone's always going off.
Believe me, I, I don't, I don't mind it a bit, I don't mind it a bit, you know. If I can solve a problem, that's my job, so.
It's been challenging.
To that point, Madam Chairman, if I could, you know, Wayne is, you know, is fantastic, I can't say enough. I mean, not a day goes by, I don't think that, um, Wayne and I have at least one conversation about, um, building maintenance and, and it's all, it's all often proactive. We're all often trying to, particularly with the middle high school, trying to think about ways to, to, um, to advance things. And, and he's in the central office to meet with Michael and I, you know, again, it was often more than once a day, but certainly not a day goes by that we don't meet. He does do a fantastic job, this town, the school department, this town is very fortunate to have him, he's extremely committed, does a good job, uh, leading his staff. It's been a challenge, the middle high school project has been a challenge, but, um, without Wayne, I think we would have been, you know, really at a significant loss to, to not have the level of attention and care that he has for his work. And we talk weekends, evenings, he's very, very receptive to taking my calls and works very hard. So I want to publicly acknowledge that, Wayne, thank you very much.
Years, years ago, when I first came, the superintendent would, on a snow day, the superintendent would call me, Wayne, what do you think? Now, knowing John as well as I do, I generally call him. Anytime.
Yeah.
Four-thirty, quarter, five in the morning, you know, he's, you know, John, how's it, he looks okay? The goal is to have a regular school day every day. Last year was quite an exception.
Yeah. Well, the next great challenge too is, is gonna be dealing with all landscaping issues.
Yeah.
That's, that's another big challenge and that's, we're not gonna really realize that until the spring, summer, fall of, of this year.
So we're, we're planning, 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 you know. First goal is how do we move snow? And I think we're slowly figuring that out, it is quite a challenge. We, we're proactively looking into spring landscaping, maybe some help with landscaping, things like that, so.
We've, we've begun those discussions already, so we are thinking that, but again, that's, I think, to Wayne's style. You know, he's thinking about what needs to get done, not in the moment, which is a good thing, proactive.
Thank you, Wayne.
Questions, comments? Good job.
Nice job. Just thank you for everything that you do.
I'll bring something else next time. Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Always got a new guy.
See you in the morning.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
All right, next on the agenda is the middle high school athletic facilities committee appointments and either Mr. Webster or Mr. Vannessa, who do you want to take?
I'll, I'll take Webster.
So, so this initially was called the turf field, uh, committee because we had plans to hopefully look at putting a turf field either in where they're building the athletic fields on the new, uh, down at the new facility, um, where the old high school was. Uh, then we started talking about maybe we put a turf field somewhere else and we started looking at the current baseball field and we've had some consultants come in, um, and that's a possibility. But when we started looking at it, there's a lot more than just a turf field. There's a definite need for, um, restroom facilities at the current turf field. There's a definite need for a new concession stand at the current turf field. And there is other needs, including possibly irrigation, uh, storage, et cetera. So in our last meeting, which was kind of an organizational meeting, and it wasn't an official meeting yet because we, everybody has to get sworn in once they're appointed tonight, we decided to change the name of the committee to the middle high school athletic facilities, uh, committee. Um, and it will address all of the issues I mentioned. I know, for example, with the restroom facilities at the current, um, turf field, I believe it's this week that, um, Marty Tilton and our building inspector are going in to meet with the state, um, asking for a waiver in terms of the number of, um, the number of toilets and urinals we have to install at the turf field because the number right now is really high, it's based on the capacity of our bleachers and it's, it would cost us a real lot of money if we had to do that. So, um, we're pretty, we're pretty confident we'll get the waiver to, to put a smaller number in. That, that'll be one of the first, first things that this committee, um, takes a look at. Initially, uh, I should also read the, what the scope of the, of our work will be. Identify the cost and options for funding the construction of a building to house public lavatories and a concession stand to comply with state and local health regulations. Research the feasibility and identify the cost and options for funding a multipurpose athletic recreational facility at the site of Cary Park located at the North Reading Middle High School, including, but not limited to, a synthetic turf field, athletic field, including the inlay for a baseball diamond and related amenities. Irrigation for a natural grass practice field currently under construction in the area adjacent to the Arthur J. Kenny Athletic Synthetic Turf Field Complex and other associated needs. Further, it was determined that the name of the committee undertaking the above charge will be the middle high school athletic facilities committee. Those who attended our first meeting, um, we talked about reaching out to committee, community members and there was reach out to the community. We've had two community representatives, um, who have asked to be part of the committee. Right now, we're at eleven members, I don't know if we could add more. I wouldn't be averse to adding more if there are more community members who are interested, I don't know about Mr. Vannessa and other members, but I think.
I would be mu- very much in favor of, I like large groups where you have a lot of people invested in what they're doing.
Exactly, and if we get more input from the community at large, that would be extremely helpful.
So it's open, if anybody's interested, we could.
And so you understand what the, you know, in terms of the field space, the issue we have right now is we just don't, we, we've talked about the increasing size of our athletic programs, we don't have enough practice space. And especially the last two years when we lost our old practice field, um, we're, we're tearing up some of the town fields. We're, we're using Ipswich River Park a lot, we're using McGuire Field over on Chestnut Street quite a bit.
Baseball field.
The baseball field is, is being used for everything, football practice, soccer games, soccer practice.
Track.
Um, track for throwing events. So even with that new field being built down there, um, the natural turf field where the softball field will also be, we still feel we need more practice space and we also are really interested in irrigation for that, possibly for that new natural turf field. So that's the, um, that's the scope of our project. If anybody has any questions or issues they want to bring up right now, if not, I'll just, um, proceed with the members that we want to appoint.
Just real quick, I know initially when you guys were thinking about doing this, the practice field was what you were thinking to turf, but then it came up with the, the drainage.
Right, the drainage put in is already, is, is for a natural turf field and it's far different than what would be required for.
So if someone won like the big jackpot and said you have unlimited funds, would you make that a turf field?
I think if we had unlimited funds, I would do that, yes.
Just out of pure curiosity.
I, I dream about it, Janine, to be honest with you, I actually thought about that. And, and, uh, i- i- if, does anybody in the community that really wants to be recognized and they have a couple of million dollars that'd like to donate, I mean, we would be willing to recognize that.
I'd take it.
And just, if you're gonna do it, do it now and save us a lot. And just, if you're going to do it, do it now, it'd save us a lot of-
The committee can end tomorrow. We can have our first meeting and then-
No, but ultimately, wouldn't it be great to have that practice field also a turf field?
Ultimately, yeah, that, yeah, it would be, because the amount of use those fields get, our old practice field, no matter what we did, we could never keep it grassed by the middle of a season, it was completely worn away.
Problem is, Janine, you'd have to do almost what we do with the turf, the existing turf field.
You would have to tear everything out.
Right.
And we've got to be careful there, too, because we're, we're dealing with a lot of the drainage that's coming off the-
Exactly.
Down into that area from the upper, from up here.
So it's all, that's, it's a good point, all the drainage is tied together. So coming all the way down from the school-
I would have to be very careful.
-that area.
Interesting. All right, sorry.
So-
I just had a quick question. The, the waiver for the bathroom facility, like, do we have a deadline that we have to-
No, what, what we've been told, we, we have to have a plan. We have to have a plan by this spring. Our understanding is that if we have the plan this spring, we could hopefully get another year's worth of a waiver. But I think, I don't think we're going to get much more than that.
You have to go through the building inspector.
Right.
And, and he's been very cooperative so far. And like I said, like Mel said, we're going to probably find out this week exactly what we're required to do. Whatever it is, it's going to cost money.
It is.
Oh, absolutely.
To do it.
The unfortunate thing is that the state plumbing code is set up to handle a facility like-
Oh, Gillette Stadium, yeah, Gillette Stadium, right.
And, and we don't run quite that kind of a thing with a bunch of people from far away going to the same-
Exactly.
And it's an entirely different circumstance, but that doesn't change the state plumbing code.
And exactly, and just, just another issue, for example, when I, I mentioned the concession area, the concession stand, it doesn't have running hot water. And we've been told by the, the new health inspector that we can no longer cook food there. We can bring food in, we can bring pizza in, we can bring food in, and let's cook somewhere else, but we can no longer cook food there because there's no hot water on. Now, that, there could be a temporary, you could probably get a temporary hot water heater in there, and you could solve that, but that's not a long-term-
Right.
-solution.
Small electric hot water heater.
Exactly. Yeah.
And to answer the obvious question, retrospectively, should we have included a lot of this-
Yes.
... project? I think we had talked, there was some discussion, but like everything else, we had to draw the line someplace.
I think-
Well, it was something the state wasn't going to reimburse, so it would have been-
Right. It wasn't reimbursable, and we saw where the price was going on this project, we just couldn't continue to add things on.
But it might have made some sense to, obviously, to have included it, but again-
And so people understand, the reason why we didn't need to put bathrooms in previously was because the old high school building and restrooms were in three hundred feet of the entrance to the turf field.
Interestingly enough, there were only like three or four bathrooms per gender.
Right.
But that was enough back then to satisfy the, the needs of the field.
Right, it was adequate, but now, we don't have that building there, and the batch and the high school, the school, both too far away from the, from the field to qualify.
And, and we tried to modify the, you know, building on the field of bathroom facilities, but unfortunately, we couldn't get that passed the state.
Exactly. We looked at the current, you know, there are bathrooms, but they're in the team room, the locker rooms, and we, those can't be used by the public. And Cliff had made an attempt during the design phase to kind of have the building flipped around, so the bathrooms would have been in the front, accessible to the public, and the locker rooms would be in the back, but that wasn't, we weren't able to get that to happen. It was a good try.
I couldn't change the system.
Right.
But the, the bathrooms we have down there are more than adequate for the-
Oh, for the teams, yeah.
Coaches and the officials and people that are down there for games and practices.
Right, for practices and stuff, yeah.
So just wearing black and white jersey and you're all saying-
Yeah.
The good news is that a new facility will be able to use the same, probably the same pump station.
Right, and also the-
And not have to even change the pump station.
Right, and use a treatment plant.
And go up to our wastewater plant.
Right.
So we won't have to build a whole-
So would we be looking to construct, you know, a building next to where it currently is now?
Well, we've talked about different, one of the areas we've talked about, we've looked at different areas, it actually might make more sense to put it more on the Cary field.
With the concession stand kind of as now.
Kind of a little bit.
In that area.
Yeah.
But that's something we have to look at, but yeah, because there's probably more room there than there is where the existing building is.
Yeah.
So anyway.
So any other questions?
Do we need to say where the members are?
Yeah, so I will make a motion to appoint the following members to the Middle High School Athletic Facilities Committee, and I'll read each member and the term that they will have. So there's, there's three different terms.
Okay.
So we have Mr. John Benard, Superintendent of Schools, three years. Mr. A.J. LaPret, High School Principal, three years. Mr. David Johnson, Athletic Director, three years. Mr. Wayne Hardiker, Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds, three years. Mr. Jerry Vannetta, School Committee, two years. Mr. Mel Webster, School Committee, two years. Mr. Stephen O'Leary, Board of Selectmen, two years. Ms. Rita Mullen, Parks and Recreation, two years. Mr. Marty Tilton, Parks and Recreation, one year. Mr. Ed Madden, Community Representative, one year. And Mr. Chuck Kaurucci, Community Representative, one year. And once those one-year terms are up, those people would be eligible, obviously, to reply and-
This has got nothing to do with the value of the person.
Right. We just had to stagger-
We have to stagger the terms.
Initially, our plan was to appoint everybody for the length of the project, but when we looked back on our original motion, we did, our original motion did call for staggered terms.
Second.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work you guys did, thank you. All right. Turn it over to the superintendent to go over the educator plan and annual goals.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So in your packet, I've included for you my goals for the period of January 2016 through April of 2017, along with my self-assessment that led me to the development of those goals. So if I could, I'd like to just take a few moments to walk you through a bit of a refinement of the work that, that I had done prior to the workshop that we had with Mike Gilbert of the Mass Association of School Committees on January 25th. So what I, what I have for you in the packet is, is a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and then I have three district goals. So for the first, the professional practice goal, my continued work with the new superintendent's induction program sponsored by the Mass Association of School Superintendents, year, I'm in, currently in year two, that is a three-year program, and that program, I believe, continues to serve me well in developing my skills in strategy development, data analysis, instructional leadership, leadership team development, and school committee and superintendent relations. And what I've done for you, and it's a little bit different than the goals I had in my first year, is the key that follows each goal, so you'll see a reference to standards, that was in the, in the first year goals, I've included it again, that is in reference to the rubric, the superintendent's rubric that's issued by the Department of Education. So if you see a code, it would be, say, standard one, and it might be indicator D, element one. So if you, the rubric that I provided to you previously, you could, you could code the, the standard that I've indicated here with that rubric. What I've added this time, and I just, I thought it was just a good idea, again, as we looked to try and align goals from, say, the school committee's goals down to the educator goals, I decided to key your goals with my goals. So what I've indicated on each of the five goals of mine is a key to the school committee goals. So for example, in this one, the professional practice goal, the, the reference to LG refers to the, to the, to the area in the school committee's goals under leadership and governance. So I think there's leadership and governance, family and community relations, so you'll see codes in reference to that. And again, those are, those are the goals, the goals you developed, but I reissued to them, to you last, last Monday. So that's just a little bit of a, an addition this year. And then what I've tried to do for each of the five goals is to, is to give you some, some initiatives, some action steps that I will undertake, and the kinds of benchmarks or evidence that will be used to reflect how well I'm making in terms of my progress in meeting that goal, and the timelines in which I, I hope to meet those, those goals. What I will do, what I planned to do, and what I did last time, was to give you kind of a mid-cycle progress report. So if this all looks good to you tonight, what I will do sometime in probably August, September, sometime in the mid-cycle, is to provide you a little bit of a narrative update, kind of in that, that peach-colored section, as to, as to the progress that I believe I'm making for you to kind of match, match up against my progress. So that, that little bit of an explanation is going to carry through all five goals, okay? For the professional, excuse me, for the student learning goal, I think our discussion last, last Monday centered on, you know, doing a little bit better job around kind of identifying some, some outcomes, some measurement. So what I've done is I've refined this goal a little bit more. It reads now that I will work to create the conditions necessary for all students to achieve at the highest levels by the end of the 2016-17 school year, which will be just a little bit beyond where my cycle is, we have it right now as April of 2017, that each of the five schools in the district will have met or shown significant progress toward meeting their identified student growth targets for the high needs in all student subgroups based on the, on the measurements that we identify. I noted here that strong collaboration with the school principals and other administrators on the development of their goals, their activities and benchmarks has established the framework for elevating student achievement through targeted efforts. Again, I'm trying to, to do a good job here of, of kind of modeling, if you will, my interactions with the administrators on the development of their goals, much like we, we expect our administrators to do with our educators when they work with them. You know, this is, this is, this, I think, happens to be a very good, positive byproduct of the new educator evaluation model, is that there's more conversation, there's more dialogue between the evaluator and the educator. So my conversations in the fall, Michael's sitting right here, I know he'll agree because I'm putting him on the spot, but we had a pretty intensive conversation around goals development, it's a good thing, and I think it helps to align things well. Then I adopted three district improvement goals. The first one, quite honestly, I'm very pleased and proud of the progress that the administrative team has made with me in advancing our district strategic plan, our five-year plan. So as you all well know, the previous superintendent, Kathy Willis, did a very good job in my, in my belief, and I think a lot of people would share that belief, in, in leading the district through the development of a strategic plan, the NRPS 2016. It's my belief that that strategic plan, I hope others feel the same way, that that strategic plan has served us well. And the annual updates that were made each year, and I made one for you earlier on, on our year five, the, the 2016, I think is a good benchmark for us to kind of measure how well we're doing with meeting the goals that we stayed in our strategic plan. So this past July, the Administrative Council, and this was pretty typical, I will say, for the last several years, convened to update the plan that we were working under, the NRPS 2016, and we did an extensive amount of work at that two-day retreat on framing our new successor five-year strategic plan, which we're calling NRPS 2021. I had what, what I'm sure the Administrative Council hopes is a final workshop with them today. We've, we've worked very diligently since July, I think, to, to, to bring about a good, comprehensive strategic plan that I'm prepared to, to, to share as a draft with the district-wide faculty, it could be as early as tomorrow, for their input. It would be a draft, I want to gain their input into it before I present it to all of you. But my goal right now is that I will be presenting a draft for your input at the February 22nd School Committee meeting. And the reason why I think we've spent so much time on, in a short window, was the strategic plan has, and I wanted, I want to be in a place where we're continuing to use it effectively as we develop budgets. So in order for us to, to do a good job in effectively developing our FY17 budget, I'm really looking to have our strategic plan, the first year of our new strategic plan, in a pretty good place, so that when we're talking about the initiatives that we want to undertake in fiscal year 17, they're going to be aligning with our budget development. So that's, that's all coming together. Right now, it's coming together nicely. As I, as I said, I'm hoping to share that district-wide with the faculty as early as tomorrow for their feedback, and then make some final adjustments leading up to your meeting on February 22nd. So I think that the strategic planning is important and has served us well, and I think that to, to, to not have that as part of a district improvement goal would just be, it wouldn't make sense to me. The second district improvement goal I've adopted is the school safety and security protocols for the district. So as you all well know, this is something that's been on our list of, of things to do for several months now. We had a nice presentation in January for the community to announce some enhancements to our existing school safety, uh, security protocols. We will be leading a district-wide training this coming Friday, February the 5th. It's one of the rare occasions when we have the opportunity to bring everybody in the district together, and we're doing that this coming Friday. Custodial staff, secretarial staff, paraprofessionals, all of the educators, administrative central office, everyone will be part of the three-hour training that's going to be facilitated by our two assistant principals, Mike Maloney and Michael Downs, the police chief, the deputy fire chief, and two of the North Reading Police Department members, Kevin Donnelly, who was a, a school resource officer, and our current school resource officer, Sean O'Leary. And by the way, Sean O'Leary, Kevin Donnelly, Mike Maloney, and Michael Downs are all trained trainers of the ALIS protocol. So we met today as a kind of a, next to the last meeting to prep for Friday. We're going to meet one more time on Thursday for a final run-through, but I think we have a very good and important program to present to our staff on Friday, and we will be, you know, as you all know with the timeline, we'll be working at the secondary level with students in some of those trainings late, later this spring. And the, the plan is to have everybody initially trained and ready to go for the opening of the, of the 16-17 school year. So it's been, it's been a massive undertaking, but we've received some very good continued support from the local public safety personnel, and I think that this is a good thing. Unfortunate as it may be in some respects to think about it, I think it's necessary and it's, and it's appropriate.
So John, you said the start of the school year, all schools?
Yeah, the final, I think the final training in, in the elementary levels is October, October of 2016. But they'll be, all faculty will have received the training in this, in the, in the February 5th training. So yeah, by, by October of 17, excuse me, October of 2016, we should be up and running. The plan right now, and I have no reason to think it won't be, is to have it fully up-
So that would be like a school-based training for the students?
Correct, right. And those, yes. At the secondary level, the students are involved in the trainings. At the elementary, they're, it's kind of an age-appropriate training, it's through the teacher and the classroom.
Right, right. Presentations.
Correct. And a bill, I should say, and it's, it's a good point, there will be, while we're doing a full district-wide training this Friday, the, the trainers are also going to be working at each school over the course of the next few months. So I think there's a little bit to be gained by having a kind of a smaller group, school-based meeting, those will be taking place as well.
I like the idea that it's being moved ahead incrementally, so that we're, we're getting, the initial thoughts are out there, even though the full training isn't.
As John mentioned, too, we're very fortunate to have the police department and the fire department expertise that they have, and they're willing to work with us on this.
Yeah, they can, you know, I gave them, I think, appropriate kudos in the January presentation, I'll do that again on Friday, but it can't be overstated. I mean, they, we've had a very good longstanding working relationship, and I think everybody sees this as, again, it's, I don't know if I'm saying it correctly, but it's, it's unfortunate that we need to be thinking about these things, but it's the responsible thing to do. And, and, you know, I can't, there has not been, there has not been a time when we haven't felt the need to come together to review something, to talk about things that we haven't gotten the support of, both the police and fire department.
Both of them, yeah.
Yeah, very much so. the police and fire department. Yeah, very much so. Yeah, very much so. And then lastly, it's a little bit duplicating part of my administrative report to you tonight, but the third district improvement goal is the, this is kind of under the, just when you thought you had enough of a building project under your belt, we've taken on another one. So, the little school roof project. So, you know, I think this is important from not only a kind of an operations standpoint, if you will, kind of facilities management, but I think it's, you know, it contributes to the learning environment of that school. So, if you don't mind, Madam Chairman, I'll just kind of morph into my administrative report on this one a little bit. But Michael and I attended the board meeting of the MSBA on Wednesday, January the 27th, and we were, it was not unexpected, but nonetheless, we were approved for our project at the little school to commence in, right now, I would say it's mid-June. In fact, I think there were some contract documents that our project manager has emailed me during this meeting tonight, that he's ready to move forward with the next steps. But this is an exciting project. I'm very grateful to the support that not only the school committee has given, but the town meeting, and Michael Gilberto has worked very closely with me on this too. He's been very helpful. So, this is, this again is another example, I think, of a good team effort, and if all goes according to plan, we will be going out for bid, bid in sometime in the late winter, early spring, with the idea of starting this project in mid-June and concluding it through mid-September. We have moved all summer programs from the little school this year, so that there are no complications around the efficiency that needs to be achieved to get this project done on time. So, it's a good thing. We stand to receive 46.58% in reimbursement from the MSBA. I think they're very pleased with the overall condition of the school and see this project as being one that's going to extend its life. I did, in my administrative report, copy you on a letter that I got from Jack McCarthy, who we've all come to know and love, so to speak, for the executive director of MSBA, acknowledging the project being moved forward. So, but to the goals, you know, I think these are, I hope you see them as being, you know, valuable. They certainly, you know, I try to involve other people in the work that gets done, because it's not about, you know, one person getting it done. It just can't be that way. So, as we look toward, you know, developing that kind of this relationship with my administrative council and with the school committee, you know, I think that that work continues to be important, and it really does play a contributing role to the, to my ability to achieve what I want to achieve through these goals. And then I would just make quick mention of the self-assessment. So, I took some time, it's the second part of this document in your packet, to just do a little bit of reflection on the areas where I think that, you know, there's a place for me to grow, and I'm hoping that that's reflected in both the self-assessment and in the goals document.
No, just, I'm really pleased about the school safety part of this, John. It's a good initiative, and I think that we need to do it and get it done. So, and it's a nice collaborative commitment with the public safety.
Yeah. You know, and I probably, I should, I don't know if I said enough about, Michael Maloney and Michael Downs too, from the school department side, have done a really nice job, working with Sean O'Leary as our school resource officer to-
There's so much to do.
I know.
Yeah, there is, there is. You know, and this is a challenging one, because there's an emotional piece to this one too. So, but I think we'll, I'm confident that we can bring this to a good place.
I just wanted to thank Julie for coordinating the Mike Gilbert meeting last week. Mike's from the Mass Association of School Committees. You know, it was great, because he affirmed that we were doing a lot of things right. He gave us some good ideas on where to change. In fact, I think one of the things John didn't mention is, we've actually moved the, John's next evaluation will be April 17th. We were initially going to do it in October, which really kind of, I mean, in June, which really left us like about six or seven months to evaluate, and Mike said he should just move it out to the next year, because that's really not enough time. It was also good to have Mike here, because not only did we able, we were able to go over this goals, you know, evaluation material, but he's just good to bounce a lot of things off of, because he's been involved with school committees and school districts for 100 years. And it was also great to be able to walk him around and show him the schools. He was very impressed with both of our school buildings. And I also want to thank Julie for the sandwiches.
Oh, my gosh.
How much do we owe you for the sandwiches?
Yeah, they were very good. The sandwiches were very good.
Very good. Where'd you get them? Seriously?
Market Basket.
Really?
They're the best. Market Basket's the best.
One thing I just wanted to note, and I don't know if any of you noted, but John has highlighted the superintendent district improvement goals that did our agenda.
Yes, I saw. I noticed it. That was Julie's suggestion. I'm glad you mentioned that, yes.
You didn't bring anything to eat tonight at all.
So, can we talk about, how does that work for all of you? Remember, that was a suggestion out of Mike, as we go along in the process. I'm glad you brought it up. I forgot. Thank you. I'll try to do that when I think something fits with the goal. Okay.
I thought that was a really smart thing to have done. That way, it's not all together, like-
No binder this time, I promise. I commit to you, no binder.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, Julie, for picking up on that.
Next is routine matters. To approve the minutes, if I could get a motion for the executive session for January 4th.
Second.
Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And then for the open session on January 4th?
Move to approve.
Thank you, a second. Thank you. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. January 19th, open session.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Questions or concerns? All right. Just a quick side note on that. We received a lovely note from one of the audience members thanking for the kind and open forum that we did have in regards to the school safety issue that was discussed that night. So, without further ado, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And then lastly, the open session for the January 25th superintendent evaluation that Mr. Gilberto, sorry, Gilbert.
Gilbert.
Sorry. Gilbert came from.
Move to approve, January 25th, 2016 workshop session.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Mr. Conley, would you like to take the budget update?
Yeah, I think, Madam, we're going to, we're going to tag-team you on this one, if that's all right. Just a little bit to update you on with the capital improvements plan. So, tonight, we'd like to update you on two items with respect to the capital improvements plan. And the first is the elementary wireless infrastructure project. As you're all aware, I sent you a good amount of information, I think, on Friday, again, on Saturday, and then again today. And I apologize for what seemed like, you know, I was inundating you with information at a late time, but it was information that was coming our way, you know, pretty rapidly, as we learned more about the grant possibilities for assisting the town and being able to absorb the cost for this, for this very large project, as well as subbid documents, quote documents that we got, and also the extent to which we learned that there may be more work involved. So, in all of that, there are still some remaining unknowns, and it would be my recommendation to you that the committee maybe rethink its requests for the fiscal year '17 capital improvements plan items and hold the wireless infrastructure project off for one year. Michael's going to talk to you a little bit about some information we learned today about the grant funding and how that's not likely to be available to us until fiscal year 2018 anyway. So, my recommendation is that we hold off on that. We're due to make a presentation to the CIPC, the Capital Improvements Planning Committee, on Wednesday. I would be very quick to say, and Michael's going to talk to you, about one of the adjustments to the remaining items with a slightly increased cost, that it would be my hope that by doing what I think is the prudent thing here, giving us more time to vet the extent of what the work that needs to be done. We have a wireless system in place. It's just something we're looking to advance, but I think we stand a better chance, and the community might have a better appetite for working with us to fund the remaining projects to the tune of about $260,000. So, I guess my recommendation to you is that we go back to the list that we had originally submitted to you in the fall, consider removing the wireless infrastructure project from that list as one adjustment to that list, and then making a slight adjustment to the increased cost for the multi-function van that Michael's going to talk to you about now.
Great. So, yes, as John just said, I think a big piece of, an unknown of the wireless infrastructure project is that grant, and that's something that, as a reminder, it's a grant that Dr. Daley and his team aggressively pursued when it was rolled out a year ago as part of the state's initiative to help districts kind of get up to speed with this, with the wireless infrastructure to help support, you know, digital learning, which we all know is the focus in the testing environment, that the state is working towards, the computer testing environment. So, there was a call this morning, I think is partly this information is getting released, I think is part of the governor released his budget last week, and that grant, as Mr. Bernard just mentioned, is going to be delayed, the funding of that grant is going to be delayed until fiscal 2018. And I think we feel that this gives us a chance to update the grant applications, again, which will be released this spring, and kind of reconfirm with the new information that we have, has come to light over the research that Dr. Daley and his team has done over the last several months, and submit a new application this spring. And we do feel that because of the timeline of the grant, and because of the importance of this project, and the importance of doing it, doing it right, and the need to vet a more concrete cost impact number next year with other capital needs, it is prudent and maybe, you know, fiscally responsible to table this for a fiscal '18 request, and certainly make that a high priority in fiscal 2018.
Madam Chair, a question on the grant. I'm assuming that every district and his or her brother and sister are applying for these grants. Why do we think we're going to get one?
Well, it's interesting. I don't, the feedback I got from Dr. Daley is that it was a very quick turnaround time when the grant was released a year ago. So, we don't feel a lot of districts had their information together, and there may not have been a lot of the districts that applied initially. And we, one of the districts, we got notified that we were in the pipeline for consideration. There was only, you know, a few million dollars that was released initially, and it was only, it was only a handful of districts that were awarded initially, and then everything was kind of put on hold. And we, you know, stood as a district that was in, under consideration, and we're waiting for further updates, which somewhat came this morning. So, there's certainly no guarantee, but I think the feedback that we've gotten is that, you know, our project would be, would certainly meet all the goals of digital learning that the grant is looking to support. So-
But does this, does this delay give other districts now a chance to get in?
I believe, I believe it's going to open it up in other-
That's my concern.
Yeah. So, other districts could, could apply when it gets released, but I think from what we heard on the call yesterday, districts, and we're trying to get this confirmed, this is one piece of information that we're trying to get confirmed, districts that were already in the pipeline, under consideration, would be given, you know, the top higher priority. And we've been working with the digital learning team, with the date, with the DESC that's organizing the grant, and we've been trying to arrange the grant in such a way that it would meet their, their goals and objectives to get in, to move up on that priority list. And I think, I think we're hopeful that would be the case.
Thanks. Michael, if you don't mind, could I just add, Madam Chairman, too, that, again, a lot of this information came to us, I'm sorry, but it's come very late, and as part of our prepping for the capital improvements planning presentation on Wednesday, Patrick had reached out to his contact about our status with the grant mid to late last week. So, to your question, Mr. Webster, about, you know, why do we think we're in good stead? There's no guarantee that's true. However, feedback we've gotten along the way, and as recent as the end of last week, is they're very, I think intrigued is probably a good word, with the work that the district has done, particularly around the new digital learning model. That's been, that's been specifically cited. So, I think there are some things that work in our favor with the work that we've done, that shows that we, you know, have the capacity to do more if things could be better, along with what the point that Michael just made about, you know, those, those communities that are, have kind of been identified as a, you know, in a good place right now, might continue to be in that good place.
We look like somebody who might use it.
Right. That's a good way to say it. Yeah. I think they like the work that they've seen. Again, not a guarantee, but it's not, we're not looking, I think, to go from way over here to get to another point. I think they've seen that the district has done some good work incrementally.
What are some of the terms? Like, what do we have to promise as a district to be a part of the grant? Like, are we promising to go one-to-one?
That was a, there was a one-to-one-
I know that was a consideration for it. So, I mean, that's a big concern of mine is, now are we buying devices? Are we leasing devices? Are we allowing parents to buy devices if that, you know, if our grant is accepted?
A one-to-one initiative was a piece of it.
That we would be working towards.
For the entire district?
No.
A one-to-one envi, the capabilities of a one-to-one environment.
Not, not across the district, not at every grade level. No, not, certainly not early, not initially.
Because that obviously is, to Julie's point, that's a consideration in terms of, if we have a timeline that we have to have every student with a device, and we have to buy them.
Without getting into too much specificity around it, because I don't know that it actually exists, but the plan would be something like piloting the project at a grade at a time.
Okay.
A grade to be identified. In fact, you're going to see part of that in our strategic plan. It was part of what we worked on today, as a matter of fact. But if we pick X grade, you know, that that's the pilot, 200 students on a one-to-one device, and then with the idea that you advance that each year, so now, year two, you've got two grades, year three, three grades type of thing. But the idea of a one-to, does the district have an appetite for taking on a one-to-one initiative? Was a condition of the grant application.
Correct. So, any more questions before I move on to just a quick, the next update of a cost amount on the wireless? So, the second update was, we presented our projects to the CIPC in December, with the exception of the technology projects, which we're going to present on Wednesday. And there was a request to confirm the cost of the multifunction activity bus as recent trends in the market has shown that there's been an increase in price of these types of vehicles. The town recently went through a permit of a vehicle that, you know, similar to the request. And there was, as typically happens when you present, you know, the CFSC pushes for additional information, and they ask us to confirm and go out and maybe get an updated quotes and proposals for what the current cost would be for a vehicle that met the specs of a multi-function activity bus, of which we, I have done, and it's looking like that cost is trending more in the range of between 50 and 52,000. So, that was a repeat request from our previous year that carried forward 45,000. So, that is something that we plan to, or hope to, you know, update the CIPC at their request of the recent quotes that we would receive. And yesterday, we wanted to update the full committee and hope to amend that request from 45 to 52, to just, to make sure that we're carrying enough.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe I voted against these requests, because I didn't support that multi-function bus, and I even support it less now that the cost has gone up. With all the things we're going to be asking for, I just don't see the need for that vehicle, and I just wish we could take it off the list. I just don't think it's a necessity. Yeah, it's a nice-to-have. Maybe we could save money down the line. I, I just really don't support that vehicle at all. It's just not a necessity.
Certainly understood. I think it was very close to being funded the prior year by the CIPC, and I think it is the lowest on the priority list of projects that we had presented and submitted in September to the CIPC. And I think it certainly goes through that type of a process, embedding process by the 10 members of the CIPC. And, you know, it's a little bit of a nice-to-have, but the attractiveness of it is, it has a very quick payback, buyback period of between three or four years with the potential savings it could yield.
Yeah, I understand the process. I just don't think we should be asking for it. That's, that's all. We've asked for a lot. We're going to ask for a boatload of money next year for this wireless and infrastructure upgrade, and I just don't, I just don't support it. So-
When do you have to submit that, Mike?
We would be, we would be going on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
Right. But we've already presented all of these others.
We did.
Excuse me, Michael. We've already presented all the other ones. It was, we had asked in December-
More time.
For more time on the technology one.
Correct.
If I could just put one little plug in for the multi-function bus, there's a lot of convenience here. I know what people go through to rent vans from Stonemore Ford and go and get the van and bring that back, and it is, it is a little bit of a nice-to-have. I won't disagree. But I do think, my recollection of the presentation to the CIPC was, they liked the idea of us bringing something forward that had a kind of a short payback time on it. So, I'm just offering that out to you for consideration.
Do you think there's a likelihood this is going to be approved?
I mean, I think they'll have to, there's certainly, I will say, as a member of the CIPC, and certainly Madam Chair, and Janine is certainly at the meetings, there's a lot of requests. There's about a little, close to $4 million worth of requests, so there's a high need, and certainly only, you know, a fixed amount, around $1 million, that will ultimately be funded. So, but I think, I think, you know, I think there's a lot of other departments that go before the committee, you know, they're, they're presenting their needs and the information they have on each request.
Have they determined that some of the money is going to go toward the little school roof? Has that been determined yet?
It has not.
Has not been, that funding mechanism has not been finalized. They certainly discussed it, and-
I think it's likely that that will happen, but it has not been defined.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm not throwing this out as criticism of any, I just, I just don't have a good, I think it'd be great to have it, but I just don't, I wish we didn't have to ask for it. That's all.
No, I understand.
So, just to be clear, we're removing priority one off the list.
No. We've taken priority one off the list.
Yeah.
It was, your initial list had a-
That's what she said.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, not on this list.
Right.
Oh, right.
On the original list.
From the original list, yes, correct.
That's correct.
I'm very supportive of deferring the wireless part for later. I think that makes an awful lot of sense.
I agree.
That was your position, Mallory.
Yeah.
Connecting with the grant.
Yep, I agree.
And I'm a big supporter of anything that has an investment that has a short-term payback. And I think the multi-function bus has- And I think the multifunction bus has that connected to it, and so I'd be very supportive of that. In fact, all of those items are on the list.
How are we going to deter, I mean, we do have a contract now that it looks like a little bit more favorable toward athletic busing.
Correct.
How are we going to, I know you can't measure it down to the penny or the dollar or even the hundred dollars, but how are we going to measure the payback on the, on the bus if we, if we get it?
So, what, what Dave Johnson, Athletic Director, and I did.
The number of runs.
A year ago, we looked at the number of runs and the number of the teams that could utilize this, this vehicle a year. If we optimized the scheduling of this vehicle, we identified about 45 to 50 runs that are being contracted out at the con, it was done on the old contract rate, so now the contract rate's a little bit different.
Right.
We, we identified that based on those runs and what we would pay under the, the contractual rates, and if we had it in-house and were using this vehicle, it was about $15,000 a year that could be saved. So, that's how we developed that, you know, three, the three and a half, four-year payback period.
And what do we pay for, like, clubs to travel, extracurricular activities?
I was going to add to that. That's, that's another.
Benefit, yeah.
Exactly. There, it's.
There's not a ton of them, but there's, there's.
This, this, yeah, there's, there's more than you might think, really. There's a lot of these little, you know, student council conferences, the sportsmanship conference, exactly, where literally, you know, I'm talking, going to go back to my days as the high school principal, you know, a teacher would get in their car, go over to Stonemore Ford, rent the van, bring the van back, have to get a ride to get their car. I mean, again, it's a convenience thing, but it also, I just, it, there's more of that going on that I think this, this, this bus could contribute to, and there's a cost to that. Those clubs are paying for those van rentals when they occur. So, it's, it's more than just the athletics, although the athletics is certainly the, I think, the bulk of the benefit.
Yeah.
And, and may very well find more use.
If you have it, if you have it, yeah.
If it's available.
Right.
Other than having to drive to Stonemore Ford and fool around with the.
Right.
The mechanism.
So, just to be clear, we're, if we remove priority number one, we're putting forward 272,000.
Correct.
For a request.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Right. That, that's what we're recommending to you, yes.
I'd just sort of put it forward and let them sort it out.
Are you talking about the multifunction?
I think they need to amend it, don't you think?
Well, it's on the list already, so.
If you're, if you're.
I mean, we're taking off, well, I guess.
We're postponing.
Yeah, we're taking off the wireless.
I think you're removing 100, am I right? It's 100 on that list and adding seven.
Right.
Right.
So, this does happen. Other departments go in and update quotes and come back and say, this came to light and we need to add, you know, 15. It's, it happened, I mean, Janine's.
Yeah, and it's not uncommon for a CIPC to say, hey, go out and bet this and, you know, come back and give us a little bit more information, so we try to do the due diligence.
I think the town had just gone through a permit, I think it was for the elder services, and the price came in closer to 55, so they said, you know, let's just take a look at that number.
Okay, and was there anything with the budget update other than that?
Nope, it was just about the capital tonight.
I think it, if you don't, I think it would be appropriate to vote on the updated list.
Okay.
Yeah, I know where Mel's coming from on that, because, you know, obviously we want to get consideration down the road, too. But I, I think if, again, if it's going to go before the committee, why not submit it? And, you know, next year is obviously, you know, another year, it's her as what we're going to ask for.
Right.
Well, if we're going to put it on the list, I suggest we do it this year and not next year when we're asking for quite that much more.
Well, it's.
You know, if you, if you might be more prudent to do so.
Sure.
I guess either two or three.
Yep.
All right. I'll entertain a motion then to update the list as discussed. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
No.
Oh, I don't think so.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
I don't think so. How soon you forget?
I went a little bit too fast. All right, motion carries four.
He was looking for a pause.
Sorry. I'm not, I'm not used to having to say that.
Sorry. Sorry to throw you off your game.
Oh, yeah, I'm totally on my game tonight. All right.
Sound them disagree.
I know.
Nice.
It's good to shake things up. We need to know. All right, Staffing.
Staffing, update, Madam Chairman, thank you. I do have one, Mrs. O'Connell mentioned to you about our new teacher at the middle school replacing Mrs. Fisher, who retired on Friday, this past Friday, after 16 years of service to the district. Congratulations to her. We've hired Ms. Dana Sinorati, who, who began her work today. She actually had two transition days last week, but she, I think, is going to be a nice addition to our middle school staff. She has some new ideas, as you heard about tonight. She has some film background. Ms. O'Connell is going to be coming to you at a meeting in the spring to talk a little bit more about how she might like to refine the course at the middle school level, using, kind of tapping further into Ms. Sinorati's talents. So, just kind of a little FYI for you on a, on a new member of our staff.
My son just started the class.
Today?
He's very excited to see that there is a potential to use the studio and some more video production.
Could you imagine being able to, like, manipulate and play and do things in the, in the studio?
He's a little more excited about the performance, performing arts class now.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's going to be, I think she's going to do a nice job for us, so.
Very good. Okay, moving on to bids and donations. And I would just like to say, it's very humbling to accept the bids that we'll be accepting this evening.
So, Madam Chairman, if I could, just as you go into this, just, I just want to remind you that we had committed to you, Michael and I, earlier this year, that we would periodically, and I think we're kind of looking at three, maybe four times a year, providing you with an update on in-kind contributions, so I think this is new. I did get a memo on the Hood School, but it was on Friday, late Friday, so it's on your packet, so I'll present that one to you at the next meeting. But, you know, our plan is to, to give you and the community a sense of the donations that come in that maybe are not necessarily a dollar, you know, a check in hand type of a gift, but of value equal to an in-kind contribution. So, that's the bulk of what you have here tonight.
So, the in-kind contributions are, is that since September? Is that?
Right.
That's correct.
Okay, yep. And, and those would be contributions that would be equipment or different.
Where they hire a speaker or they bring in.
Parents Association enrichment program. I, I think we have Scott Ellis.
Summarize this. Right, Scott Ellis, who built the batting cages in here.
Installation.
Yeah, I mean, and again, when we get to that, I'll speak to that. Scott's done a lot of work for us here.
Yes, he has.
A lot.
So, I think this new approach in alerting you and informing the community about the in-kind contributions being new, I think it's going to really, I mean, you see, I totaled them for you tonight. It's sizable.
I do have to ask you, John, on the little school one, the numbers don't add up, the last one. They don't add up to 11,459. So, I was just wondering if there's a mistake there.
Oh, you're right.
Technology, is that?
Did you miss the number?
You want to start on your list and we'll, I'll take that for you as you get to it?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept with gratitude donations totaling $725 to be put toward the eighth grade trip to Washington DC from Cynthia and Greg Vercolen, Nancy and Kenneth Carpenter, Robin and Maria Wilson, Grace Curly, Amy Spindler, Michael and Heather McGotti, and Arthur Kogan.
Was that?
It was Cliff.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Taken out that we are accepted.
Yes, we're back to.
Yes, we're back to, yeah.
Could I get a motion to accept, or do we want to do the in-kinds separate?
Well, I think the rest of them are in-kind.
Yeah, they're all in-kind, so we have to do each one.
I think you're right, yeah.
So, I move to accept middle school parents association in-kind contributions totaling $843.06 for various items and activities, and I move to accept with gratitude. That's from September through December of 2015.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And the motion carries five to zero.
Move to accept from Mr. Scott Ellis, resident here in North Reading, in-kind contribution an estimated value of approximately $3,000 for installation of the new batting cage at the North Reading High School, Middle School. And again, I'd just like to say, I know Scott's done a lot. He's been responsible for hanging the plaques on the wall.
He saved us a ton of money.
He's helped us, I think, install the pictures on the wall, the Frank Carey dedication.
The banners, the banners and the.
The banners and the.
He's done all that for nothing?
His right. That's amazing, he's done a lot.
Right.
A lot.
So, his in-kind is a lot more than 3,000.
I don't know if everything was for free, but definitely the batting cage.
But it was, a lot of it was.
And it was certainly a bargain.
He's done a lot of it at a very discounted rate.
No question.
He's been available to us, too.
And he, and he's, you know, happy to do it.
Yes.
Scott's an active member of the diamond club, too, which just raises money for the Carey Field.
Second.
Got that. Thank you.
Batting cage is beautiful.
Isn't it? That is the neatest thing. I don't know.
It's like the space was built for it.
Yeah.
If, you know, if the public is the chance to, just to go in and see it, it's just, it's, it's.
Tremendous.
It's very, very nice.
Really nice.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Ready to add?
Yeah.
You can tell them.
Motion to approve the school committee acceptance of an in-kind donation for enrichment activities at the high school from the High School Parents Association, September through December totaling $3,850.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have a in-kind donation from the Batch Elder, parent organization.
Move to accept in-kind donations from the Batch Elder School Parent Organization with gratitude for the period of September through December totaling $7,709 for various field trips, supplies, and other items.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And lastly?
Do we have this one straightened?
So, we do. So, the, the amount, you know, the 11,459.15 is actually correct.
Okay.
What's, what's missing is there should be an additional row for other miscellaneous items.
Okay.
Totalling 3,276.26.
Okay, but the total's correct.
It got left off the memo, but the, the total is correct. And if anyone wants to know what some of those miscellaneous items are, I can, happy to, to let you know.
Motion to approve that we accept with gratitude in-kind donations above future stipends, enrichment activities, class field trips, general supplies, and miscellaneous items for activities and expenses from September to December 2015 from the Little School Parents Association totaling $11,459.15.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. And I cannot say enough of how generous, and I keep saying this every, every time that we have the bids and donations, but just how incredibly generous this community is. I know from when the time I was on the Hood School PA, just the amount of.
I don't remember getting anything when you were.
No.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. That's because they didn't track it back.
Slow funds, that was a slow fundraising period at that time.
But, I mean, it's, it's incredible just what people do, the time that they donate, you know, above and beyond just the money. So, we're very, very fortunate to be in this community.
Imagine if they had, we, they gave in-kind values to the school committee members, what we, the time we put in?
Yeah, about $30,000.
For $47, yeah.
I'd get two cents. Okay. The subcommittee updates. Did you guys want to expand upon anything?
Yeah, I got that.
A few things.
Okay.
I have my notes, go ahead.
Couple items on here that I had asked you to put on the agenda. We, we had a brief discussion on the use of tennis, the new tennis courts by the public. And Marty Tilton from Parks and Rec, and I think they're going to talk to Parks and Rec Department and see what their plans are for use of the tennis courts. And also, we're going to get a cost on how much it would keep, cost to keep the lights on, maybe, you know, three nights a week in the spring, summer, early fall, so the residents can use the courts, you know, a couple hours a night, three nights, four nights a week. We also just had a brief discussion on, our hockey team has moved up to Merrimack College this year, and Dave Johnson reports that that's going well. It's a little bit different in that we're responsible 100% for the event. So, Dave has to find somebody to run the clock and the scoreboard and make the announcements and.
But we get the whole gate.
We get the whole gate.
Whereas before, we were paying part of the gate.
So, we pay for the ice, but then we get the whole gate. And, and Dave said it's more than, the gate's more than covering our costs. And Jerry mentioned our cooperative athletic teams earlier. They're going extremely well. We've got somewhere between 20 and 30 students who are playing on cooperative athletic teams. And Jerry, I don't know if we're going to talk about the rest of it here?
Yeah, we, we, obviously, if you haven't seen it, the batting cage is installed, it's ready for use now. And certainly in the early spring by both baseball and softball.
Did I see a putting green in there?
Maybe.
And, and not only that, but I think it can be used for lacrosse.
Oh, absolutely. Soccer.
It just turned out to be a great facility in the, in the fitness center there, an unexpected addition to our athletic facilities. But it was necessary because we had a pretty complex batting cage facility in the old high school, which we needed to replace.
A bomb shelter.
I hope Coach Carey sees it and approves of it, but it's, it's, it's really nice. And again, thanks to Scott Ellis and, and to Dave Johnson, by the way.
Right.
Who's done a lot of, had a lot of initiatives and, and done very well with them.
Eric too. Eric Ashenbo.
Yeah, Eric Ashenbald as well, yep, yep. We're still waiting to hear from Chuck Rucci on the Hall of Fame display, which is gonna get on by the gymnasium entrance, right against the wall where the, uh, the gym is, but I think he's trying to pull all the loose ends together to get that, uh, done as soon as possible. The athletic transportation, we got some good news for FY seventeen from Mike Conley, that in spite of the bus contract actually being more generally, that the, um, the, the athletic portion of that is gonna probably realize as a savings.
Right.
Uh, because of the way it's structured, so that, that, that's good. Uh, we did talk about, again, and, uh, we've gotta follow up on this, but trying to get some irrigation up to the athletic fields that are currently being constructed, uh, both the softball field and the practice field, uh, there's no irrigation there right now. We feel that if we're gonna try to grass that, uh, seed that field, that in order for the grass to grow, in order for that field to be usable sometime, probably in early two thousand seventeen.
Well, yeah, spring two thousand seventeen, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna need irrigation, so we're trying to get, uh, Marty Tilton from the recreation department, uh, is trying to get us some prices on, on the irrigation. We've talked about this in the past.
We also talked about sod, Jerry, possible, what, what would it cost to sod, put sod in rather than seeding?
As well, as opposed to seeding, uh, and again, it's an area of expertise that Marty has and his resources to, to talk to. What we're doing up there is we're trying to do it in a collaborative way with recreation, similar to what we did on the field down below, hoping to get some of their help and their expertise and, uh, uh, and possibly some funding from them as well. So I think that pretty much Mel wrapped it up. I don't know if you had anything else?
Well, we just, we did have a, a brief, um, we had a, um, communication from Hockey Boosters, which we're taking into consideration in terms of, um, doing a little more cost sharing with them for the JV athletic program, and, uh, right now, basically, the Hockey Boosters pays for the entire program.
Yeah.
Uh, they pay for the ice, they pay for the transportation in many cases, in some cases, we pay for the transportation.
Not for the coach, the-
No, but the ice.
Referees.
Right.
Since basically nineteen ninety-six, the Hockey Boosters has subsidized the junior varsity hockey team.
Right.
Everything except now, uh, the-
Coach.
The, uh, coach, so they're paying for the ice, paying for the, uh, transportation, paying for the ref-
We do a few runs.
We do a few runs.
We do some runs, yeah.
So they're looking for a little more cost sharing, and we think their proposal, there's some merit to it, and we're gonna, you know, hopefully at some point have a meeting with them and-
We gotta do a cost analysis.
Right.
Probably won't be till next year anyway.
Right, exactly.
Yeah. So that pretty much wrapped up, uh, everything we talked about.
Yep.
They should be added to our list of donations.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yes. I think we get, the Hockey Boosters is approved, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll accept the in-kind donation this year, which is gonna be just about seven thousand dollars.
They've done a good job, but they do it as well.
Yeah, they have.
They run, they run a banquet for the hockey-
Right, that's coming.
They provide some equipment and shirts and things.
They look into a little more of what traditional boosters do, rather than all of their costs going towards the expenses of the program.
And they wanna phase it over three years.
Right, and they, and they don't wanna pull out right away, so it's, it's reasonable.
I did communicate with them after the meeting about some of the questions we had, and they got, they said they were gonna meet soon and get back to it.
Yeah, but they've been very good.
And I'm, he did communicate that we're receptive to-
I did, yes, I did.
Great. That's it.
All right. Mr. Venecia, NORCAM Board of Directors meeting?
Take a deep breath. I went to the NORCAM meeting, and when it came time for old business, new business, whatever, again, I raised the issue of cameras in the gymnasium and in the, uh, Performing Arts Center. The NORCAM board is not, at this time, in favor of installing, uh, a camera in the gymnasium. Uh, the cost is estimated, again, including the camera, the equipment, uh, to be anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand dollars, although we didn't have a hard cost on that. My argument to them is it's been throughout this process is that I felt that there was some, you know, fairly valuable programming we could get from having a camera in the gym. I'm talking, you know, volleyball, girls' basketball, boys' basketball, um, pep rallies, wrestling matches, uh, obviously town meeting overflow, things like that.
Awards nights.
Their, their preference and their priority is to do both the distant, I'm sorry, the, uh, Performing Arts Center and the gymnasium together. Um, we have the infrastructure in the gymnasium, it's just a matter of running the wires and installing the camera. Well, Performing Arts Center, we don't, and there'd have to be some work done. I asked them to, uh, give me an estimated cost, and the cost is approximately, and I'm not sure how, how old this is, but it's approximately seventy-two thousand dollars to install the infrastructure, not including the equipment in the Performing Arts Center. That's a priority of theirs, and it's for good reason, I'm, I'm starting to try to change my way of thinking here, but they wanna do that so that they can film, uh, they can, uh, record town meeting without having to bring in the handheld equipment, running the wires all over the place, running the wires down the stairs, and, you know, taping them down and, and setting up and having to take the equipment down if town meeting runs two day, two days from a Thursday to a, a Monday, or from a Monday to a Thursday, means you gotta pull everything down and then put it back up again. So their priority is to install cameras in the distance learning, I'm, Performing Arts Center, and, uh, if they're gonna do that, they would consider doing the gym at the same time. They do not wanna do the gym now separately, and that's clear to me. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm thinking in terms of whether or not we try to reconsider and see if they have funds available to help us, uh, um, with some of the cost of putting in the, uh, infrastructure as well, you know, just the equipment, part of that seventy-two thousand dollars.
Were they receptive, or did you mention that to them?
No, I didn't because, no, I didn't.
My guess is they're not gonna be receptive because they're spending over a hundred thousand, close to a hundred thousand for the cameras.
Yeah.
So, and-
But I, I did, I did get from them, again, for this first time, it's, it really got, made an impression on me, that they really would, that their, their first priority is obviously town meeting and town board meetings, and then if we could, um, that, that would be a priority to get that done, you know, and then whatever flows from there.
To not put the gym ahead of that priority.
What's that?
To not put the gym ahead of that priority.
Correct.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm spinning my wheels with the gym thing, I mean, we have a real disagreement on, it's, it comes out of two issues. One is value of programming, the second issue is the cost, and now I asked them to define for me, uh, to articulate the differ, differential on the cost of doing both at the same time versus just doing the gym, and-
I'm confused, because I've been under the impression all along that everything that was needed to be installed for the gym camera is already there, and the camera just needs to be plugged in.
Rob-
That's what I've been told by-
Rob, Rob Koppone is a little bit more than that, it's the cost of the camera, which can be between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars.
Right.
And then there was some other work that would have to be done. I don't think it's very extensive, I don't think it's a big cost.
Okay, 'cause I, I just, I just, that's what we've been told by the, the project managers of the, of the school building project.
And there's a, you know, again, ongoing dispute of whether or not, you know, we should have, this is another issue that we should have addressed probably in the design-
Oh, we should, definitely.
In the design phase of the school.
Yes.
But it was an oversight, to be honest with you, we didn't do it, so.
But I will say, just, just to give you an example, in this, in this room right now, we have four robotic cameras.
Yeah.
So Jason from NORCAM comes in, yes, he has a little equipment up there, he's got it set up, they don't have to lug cameras around, they, the cameras are here, he controls them with a remote control, that's what they wanna do in the Performing Arts Center.
And fairness to NORCAM, they made a very good case for doing the Performing Arts Center.
Yes.
Because again, one, part of their mandate, part of their charge-
Right.
Is to do town meetings and things of that nature, so maybe that's where we have to refocus.
If you remember, the school building committee did approve doing that until we got to the point where we couldn't afford the hundred-some thousand dollars.
Well-
How much did it cost to do what we did to the gym?
Um, you mean to put the, to put the infrastructure in?
Yeah, whatever's there.
I don't know, because it was already, for, for some reason, that room was already wired for the camera, but they didn't wire this or the-
What, what happened is, we probably had the opportunity to do the infrastructure in the Performing Arts Center.
We did.
But what happened was, every time we tried to bring up something additional and then coordinate it with NORCAM and with us and with the architect, they would throw back at us, "Well, we're gonna run into delays," and that area, that space in particular was a difficult space and was running behind, so for us to make a change, for them, it was, they just didn't wanna do it, so.
By they, you mean architects and-
Our architect, yeah, yeah. So I'm thinking maybe, you know, um, maybe the next school committee meeting, we talked just a little bit about going back to them with a proposal that's different than just requesting the-
Yeah.
Camera equipment in the gym.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. The subcommittee schedule for upcoming meetings are as follows. The policy subcommittee will meet February third at two-thirty in the superintendent's office. The athletic facilities committee will meet February eighth at one P M. in the superintendent's office. The S S B C will meet February ninth at five-thirty here at the distance learning lab. The finance planning team will meet February tenth at eight-fifteen in the superintendent's office. The NORCAM Board of Directors meeting will be February twenty-fifth at seven P M. at the NORCAM office. And lastly, the athletic subcommittee will meet March first at twelve-thirty at the superintendent's office. And from that, we'll go into finishing the administrative report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, so, um, a couple of things, um, I just wanna put out to you a date, um, for the, what would be the second annual North Reading night off, um, that's gonna be Tuesday, March the fifteenth, I expect. You may recall from last year that there was a letter at the Community Impact Team, the K to twelve action team, which I serve as the chairman, I've asked, um, various boards in the town to kind of adopt a bit of a proclamation, if you will, um, not to schedule meetings and such on that night, so I'll be bringing that to you on the February twenty-second, um, school committee meeting. I think I, I've updated you, unless there are any questions on the little school roof replacement project? Is that still good? Okay. And then lastly, I had on, I just, you know, um, it's been mentioned already, but I don't want to, um, I don't wanna not mention the good work of, um, the students and Carla Listah for, um, this past weekend's performances of Bugsy Malone Junior, it was a really cute show, um, you know, the, the, the students just worked so hard and they had so much fun, it was, it was obvious, I think, to, to anyone who was there, and I know a number of you saw it, and it was, um, a lot of fun, and Carla Listah just does such a nice job with Joanna Callahan and Jesse O'Brien, they just worked so hard, it was a really, I think, another good example of, um, you know, the, the, the good work that goes on at the middle school and, and the value that this community gets out of the Performing Arts Center, you know, it's just a show.
What struck me was the number of kids involved.
I know.
There were a lot of kids involved in that play.
But did you see the diversity that they had with the, the, um, the sets? The sets?
Yeah.
They would, you would turn it one way, and then they would connect together, or you'd break apart.
And the kids worked their butts off over the stage crew.
Oh, my gosh.
A lot of things.
Yeah.
And throughout the performance, all I could think, and I, I kept talking to my wife, she went back the other way, these are middle school kids. This is a middle school play.
Right.
Hey, alls I could think about is, please, God, don't let anything go wrong, that's all I could think about for, for the whole performance.
I still can't come to things in this building and not feel that way, when they're now, with playing the National Anthem at the ball games and everything, I'm like, oh, please work, tonight, please work.
No, it was, it was great, they do a great job.
Very good.
Production, I mean, it's just fantastic.
And it's, it's-
Gives younger kids across the district something to look forward to.
Right.
I'll tell you what, I, I went and saw, uh, Beauty and the Beast that the little school did last year.
Right.
Talk about, yeah, it's, that was an, they did an incredible job, absolutely incredible.
The feeder programs now to maskers are outstanding.
It's great, these kids are all coming up now to the high school and they get the, I mean, think about it, I went when my daughter was in the middle school and saw their play in the cafeteria of the old middle school.
Oh, that was, yeah.
In the cafeteria of the old middle school, now they're getting up on that stage.
The kids worked so hard, they worked so hard, but it was just awful, the facility was awful, and, you know, we talked tonight, and I unfortunately was unable to make it this weekend to see this, but you talk about, um, you talked about the, the additional participation and the growing participation in athletics and how, well, our athletic teams are doing, I think where we were, you know, the high school program has always been solid, but we never had this level of a program in our middle school and elementary schools, and look where we are now in those schools, and a big part of that is the staff that we've brought in from the elementary all the way up to high school to, to run-
No doubt.
And manage these, these programs, and it's just, it's just great, and, and it, you know, it, it shows the community that we're not adding all kinds of, yes, we're adding technology courses and this and that, but we're not ignoring the arts, so, you know, we're, we're adding as fast as we can.
And also I could say is it's a good thing, we don't have to pay, like, Allison and Cal or the rest of the staff.
Oh, by the hour?
By the hour.
Oh.
We couldn't-
You couldn't afford it.
We couldn't afford it, we couldn't afford it.
Couldn't afford it. It was great, it was great. And then I had, for all of you, in the, um, this is kind of a regulation that needs to be observed, it's, um, as you know, the district is a member of two collaboratives, the North Shore Education Collaborative and the Seem Collaborative, so I provided you with a copy of their annual report, um, for two thousand fifteen, so that's in your packet too. I will be bringing some, um, financial information to you, again, is kind of a requirement for our membership in the collaboratives, but, um, um, that's not quite ready yet. I do have a meeting at the North Shore Education Consortium this Wednesday, um, but it'll be soon, and, and we do realize a substantial, um, financial savings through our participation as a member of those two collaboratives for those students with, um, um, special needs or disabilities that need to be serviced, so.
I just had a quick question, and-
Yes.
I think it would, was in here, like, how many students we have from district that-
Yeah, that, I will have that for you, I, I will have that for you as part of the audit, um, along, I, I did produce that last year, Julie, so I will again this year, with how many students our district, um, has enrolled at the two collaboratives, and also what the net financial savings is, um, for our being a member at each of them. So that's, that just aren't information that's available to me yet, but it will be, and I'll share that with you.
Thank you. Um, for future business, our next meeting will be February twenty-second, seven P M. here at the distance learning lab. Then again, on March seventh at seven P M., it'll be a, um, regular meeting with a preliminary budget presentation here at the distance learning lab. And lastly, on March twenty-first at seven P M., we'll be meeting at the Hood School in the Hood School Library, um, at seven P M. Yes.
I have a, a small item, you, as you're aware, uh, I've been following the, uh, Suburban Coalition as a lobbying group for some period of time, actually, I think since I've been on the, uh, on the committee, and what, the Suburban Coalition is a, uh, an outfit that is basically a lobbying, um, effort. Uh, back in, I think the meeting before last, I mentioned that I'd been at the December, um, in December, a meeting of the, uh, of the Coalition, it was actually the annual meeting, and the, uh, discussion was, what can we do to help improve school funding, um, in, in the next year? That's kind of the, the standard project that we, and we try to do it with different approaches, and this year, uh, one of the, one of the differences, uh, first off, there's, there's a shortfall on, on funding at the state, and secondly, uh, there's been a, uh, commission formed to study, uh, chapter seventy funding, which has come back, come up with, um, some definition of the shortfall on funding, uh, by, uh, by the state, uh, through chapter seventy, uh, which, uh, is, is currently totaling about two billion dollars, and this year, we're looking at, um, a shortfall from the foundation, um, budget commissions effort, uh, showing about five hundred million, uh, shortfall. So we thought about ways that we could, you know, perhaps move the, um, the budgeting process at the state a little bit, uh, in, in this, uh, budget season, and we, uh, we came up with the idea of having, um, a resolution that, uh, would, would hopefully, uh, be undertaken, passed by, um, groups within the cities and towns, uh, uh, in the state, and that if we all did the same, same resolution and had some substance behind it, um, that, uh, perhaps that would, uh, ring the chimes at the State House and, and both the governor's office and, and in the legislature. So we've come up with a, uh, a resolution, which we're hoping that all selectmen, um, school committees, finance committees, uh, in the, in the state will adopt, and, uh, and then we, and, and then advise Dorothy Presser, who is the, um, president of the Suburban Coalition, uh, of the results, so that she can pass that along, um, as a part of the lobbying effort for more funding this year. And, uh, we, we know it's an uphill battle, but, um, the state has a commission that was fun, uh, you know, instituted to find out, and they found out, and now's the time, uh, we should be striking while the iron's hot. So you have in your hands, uh-
Yeah, I handed it out.
Mr. Webster-
Uh, 'cause, yeah, you and I were on the same wavelength today.
A copy of the resolution, and, and I would, uh, like to have you take a look at this, and perhaps we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting to-
I think we should put it on the agenda.
Adopt it.
I think we definitely should put it on the agenda.
I've, I've also passed the same information on to the selectmen and to the finance committee, uh, through their chairs and through the, uh, town administrator.
Just a couple of things, um, the formula for chapter seventy was established in nineteen ninety-three. That's one big issue. The state vastly underestimates the real cost of education, it's a phony, it's a phony cost that they put in, and that means they can give us less money. Three, the governor, I think, is doing a fine job, totally reneged on his promise to increase, um, to increase funding to the state, at, funding to cities and towns at the same rate as revenues increasing, he's not doing that with chapter seventy, and even if he did that, it really wouldn't make a difference anyway, because as Cliff said, there's a two billion dollar shortfall.
And, and the, and the amounts that have been proposed to increase are, are so paltry that they're totally useless.
Our was just forty-nine thousand dollars. That's our increase in chapter seventy, that'll, that'll fund a lot, it won't even fund probably, by the time we're done, you know, twenty percent of what the insurance increase is gonna be for, uh, health insurance.
And we, we all follow the M A S C listserv, and, and as one, um, one of the people on the listserv commented, the, uh, uh, the full-day kindergarten-
Oh, yeah, right.
-funding, uh, would probably fund one day.
One, one full day.
Yeah.
And, and maybe, uh, depending on where you are, maybe two, uh, but, uh, you know, the, the, the numbers are just totally unrealistic and inappropriate, and, and so far under what is needed, that, you know, we need to shake the cage at the State House.
And I'm sensing, this is not just talking North Reading, talking to other school committee members, teachers, I know the superintendent talks to other superintendents, there's not a panic, but I'm sensing a bigger concern this year than I've heard in a long time about school budgets in cities and towns, a long time.
One of the reasons why I am here today is because, uh, about eight years ago, we weren't doing Wednesday afternoons-
That's right.
-in the school system, and, uh, we managed to get over that one, and we're, we're running[1645.81] We're, we're running on fumes.
And this year, we're going to do Thursday afternoons.
And the problem, the problem is that it isn't the taxpayers in North Reading that I'm paying.
That's right.
It's that the state isn't kicking in their share. And I was at a meeting back last fall sometime and talked to Karen Folito about what was really needed. And, and at that time, I told her, with, that was before the commission had, had said anything. I said, what we need is about another half a billion dollars to be distributed across the state. And, and that wasn't really as much as needed, but that would be a start.
Yep.
And, and she couldn't believe that I was saying that, that that was way beyond what they, but that's the kind of numbers we're talking. And two billion dollars is what the shortfall really is at this point. That's a long way, you know, the money's going somewhere.
Well, the amazing thing is that every single community in the state is affected.
Yes.
Every community across the board. So you would think that this would be the highest of priorities in the Legislature, wouldn't you? I mean, if, if every community is affected, then...
You would think so.
You would think that that would be the highest priority.
There was a court case that got the, the reforms back.
Goffey.
Hancock, right?
Hancock. And those same folks are...
They're still around.
Are stirring.
Yes.
And if there isn't something done, they're going to stir loudly and be in court. And that's, that's where it needs to go.
Well, you know what the big issue is too, and I was shocked at this. Almost forty percent of the state budget, over fifteen billion dollars, goes to mass health or health insurance. Forty percent of the state budget. And it's just, that's astounding. Astounding. And so when you, when you wonder why you can't get...
To beat that, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah.
So, anyway. So Cliff and I are on the same wavelength as John was.
I'll put this on the agenda for February twenty-second.
Definitely.
Okay.
Well, I got a couple of emails too in regards to this. And I know that there's people out there that have suggested to reach out to the Board of Selectmen as well as the Finance Committee as well, too.
To Mr. Webster's point, I will tell you, I was at the Superintendent's Midwinter Conference last Thursday, and you're right that there's a lot of worry right now.
I mean, we always know it's going to be dicey. When you do budgets, you never, there's never extra money that you're going to throw back in, you know? But this time, I just feel a sense of unease that I haven't felt in a while, so. Anyway.
Thank you.
We're feeling it.
One last thing, big girls' basketball game tomorrow night. New report is ten and three, and we're thirteen and one, and it's here. Come out and support the girls. They had a great story in the Boston Herald yesterday on the girls' team.
They did?
Yeah, it's right there.
Really?
Yeah. So, nice picture and a, and a story.
There's a motion to adjourn.
I thought we were staying all night.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good night.